So we're all set, it sounds like?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December the 20th New Market School Board meeting. I'll start the meeting by reading the mission statement. The New Market School District is committed to the highest standards of quality education by creating a safe and successful learning community that embraces diversity and responds to the social, emotional, intellectual, and physical needs of every child. We are dedicated to fostering links to the broader community to ensure that students develop lifelong skills, enabling them to be contributing and productive members of society. And our student rep, Sarah Monagani, is not with us this evening, so I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, Bob, and everyone at home. We were expecting to have a larger audience this evening, I think, as we were going to have a discussion regarding advanced placement exams. And due to the weather conditions, I thought it best that maybe we would defer that to a later meeting, so that -- so we'll do that on January the 3rd. Didn't feel it was probably in the best interest, given what the weather looked like it was going to be tonight, to have that many more folks out on the road. So, anyone have any -- Bob, you have any comments about our agenda? We'll talk in a little bit regarding what you have in store for us. I'll entertain a motion regarding the minutes from the last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the December 6th meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Thanks. I think these might -- are these the longest minutes? I think they're the longest ones I've seen. Lots of typing, Penny, thank you. Any comments, changes, clarifications needed? Long and accurate. Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as written signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, non-public?
And I'll make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes from the December 6th meeting.
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Okay, all those in favor of the minutes from the December 6th non-public meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mike Plasky isn't with us unfortunately this evening, so we won't have a council report. Forrest, is there anything to report from the Ed Futures Committee?
Currently, no. Just, again, we're awaiting the sort of the close of the primary season for UNH to be able to assist us with our survey, so that's where we're at. And I think I had done it before the last board meeting, but there is a summary on of the different options that's playing on Channel 13 presently, so, you know, over and over and over. So if you have a chance to take a look at that, if you need more information, there is some there as well.
Forrest, I found you on YouTube as well.
Doing what?
Doing a brief synopsis of each of the options.
Oh, that's good, because they took some video at school the other day, and it better not be on YouTube.
I'll have to search on your name again later. Okay, thank you. We've got a second read of a policy and then some others that we'd like to discuss. Jill, would you like to run with that?
Sure. I think first we're looking at the IMBC alternative credit options, which we did look at before, and this talks about the different ways that credits could be earned outside of the regular classroom-based instruction. We wanted to make sure that, I guess, that we were covering the bases as far as what types of opportunities could be available and how they tied in with the core competencies that needed to be met for the curriculum in order for the high school students to meet those requirements in order to graduate. I don't know if I need to -- do I need to read the whole thing? Does anyone have any questions about it?
Well, we read through it fairly extensively last time, as I recall. I guess if anyone have any edits they'd like to make or clarifications, thoughts? Otherwise, I guess I'm ready for a motion to adopt this policy, and we can move from there.
I'll make a motion to adopt policy IMBC as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
The core competencies, Kathy, those clearly are, well, are integral in this piece. Where are we in that process, just so everyone has a feel for that?
They're really in very good shape. They haven't finished. They have until June to finish those core competencies. The Science Department has completed theirs. Social Studies has all the competencies. They're just working on the assessment piece, in other words, deciding and determining what kinds of assessments that the youngsters would need to meet. The English Department is probably the one that, just because they have a variety of different courses at different levels, so that that's taking a little bit longer, but their professional development time, their release time for the rest of the year will be used to complete those. So those core competencies will be completed, and that's critically important as they get ready for the New England Association of Secondary Schools and Colleges, for that evaluation. So, they're very close, and they've worked hard on them, so. And this policy, as well as extended learning opportunities policies, which you've done, all tie into that.
Okay. So do we need to make -- have a, like, an effective date on this that coincides with the readiness of that?
Well, the only problem with that is that we do have youngsters right now that are doing -- already doing some alternative credit options, as, you know, as I shared with you. We had a youngster who took their fourth-year English class at the university, so they took freshman English, college English, to equate to their fourth credit so that they could graduate. We have youngsters that are already participating and receiving credit for online, as well as some youngsters who are participating in internships and working out in the community in community service, so.
Sounds like we're ready to go.
We really are ready to go, and I think that truly the core competencies are a part of this, and making sure that those experiences that kids may want to participate in meet those competencies.
So I sense that there's a good sense of, I mean, you mentioned the student in taking freshman English. So in that case, I mean, we're well warned, and I'm assuming that we're pretty close on what that person would need to do.
Right. And, you know, we also participate in students who take courses over at Stratum Tech, and they're receiving college credit. So we've been doing that in New Market for several years now, so this policy really aligns you with all the activities that you've put in place over the last few years. And I think the core competencies bring to our school the level of expectation and the rigor that we want in curriculum.
Any other questions or thoughts?
Yeah, just, Kathy, question and a comment. Just some timeline on when we might get the regulations and procedures for implementation, because I would assume that might be done more by the high school administration than it is by the superintendent's office, even though the policy direction--
They had a chance to see this policy and provide input. That would be the department chairs at their monthly advisory meeting with the principal, so they know that they have -- they are working on a process in order to do that, so. I would hope that we would have that in place by the end of the year, by June 30.
I'd hope as we begin the year with the core competencies in place--
With the new year, right.
-- that we would, you know--
Right.
-- coincide that with the consistent procedures.
Yep.
Any other thoughts? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to adopt policy IMBC signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I had it.
The next policy looks in order, I'm just reading from the minutes, was the Code of Ethics and Conduct. I don't know if that was something that we just wanted to review individually, or if that's something that we wanted to discuss, or how we wanted to handle that policy.
Well, at the last meeting, Forrest suggested that we include this, I think, for the purpose of, and to discuss it in the meeting, mainly because it's, you know, ethics is an important thing, and we've got you, a new board member, with us, and others that have been on the board for a long period of time. It's always good to review these type of things. So I think it's warranted that maybe we just read through this in this setting.
Okay.
Just so that it's, you know, everyone's clear. That'd be wonderful.
The Code of Ethics Conduct for the New Market School Board members by law 181. New Market residents elected or appointed to the school board serve the community and state by overseeing the most important function of public education. To that end, it is appropriate to provide a proper and appropriate Code of Ethics Conduct for school board members in performing the support and service to communities and the youth of New Market. We therefore resolve, one, not to be coerced into decisions by pressure groups; rather, we will listen to all points of view and try to make decisions based on all available data. Two, to strive to identify our own personal biases and prejudices to keep them from influencing our decisions. And the consideration of financial matters such as budget approval, school construction, salaries, and purchase, we will attempt to maintain a balance between fiscal responsibility and a commitment to quality education. Four, to attempt to differentiate between decisions that should rightfully be made by the administrators and those that should be made by the school board, keeping in mind that the school board's functions are legislative and evaluative, that is, to make policies and monitor their implementations. Five, to remember that a school board functions only as a total school board in a legal meeting. Individually, we will not attempt to exercise authority as individuals or will not make unauthorized commitments on behalf of the board. Six, if individually we should be a member of the minority of any vote, we will abide by the majority opinion. We will not speak outside of board meetings against any majority decision which was reached in good faith. Seven, that if contacted by a parent or other citizen about a school problem, we will point out how important it is to follow a proper chain of command, and that if avenues of appeal have been exhausted, the complainant should seek recognition on a school board meeting agenda. Eight, we will respect the confidentiality of information disclosed in non-public sessions of the board. Nine, that we will vigorously support school board policies which recognize the rights and dignity of all people, including students and employees, and which foster sound management practices. And 10, even though we may have elected -- been elected by my friends and by our friends and neighbors, we will view ourselves as a representative of the entire school district and will not be influenced by partisanship. We will consistently support what is best for the total school district. And I just have a recommendation, being a new school board member, that this be something that should be, when the person swears in, this would be something that should be handed to them as they get sworn in. I think it was good information, because I wasn't sure coming on board if there were certain expectations of how I was supposed to behave at the meetings or after meeting, whatever, so I think this is a good piece of--
That's a great idea. In the new policy manual, it, I think, one of the policies indicates that the -- a new board member is issued essentially a binder with all the policies in it, but, as you know, that's a bit of volume to swallow right away, so pulling, you know, having that kind of--
Or directing them to that specific one, like, the place to start.
That's a great idea.
For this particular policy, Mr. Chairman, I actually, the reason, one of the reasons I had asked that we go over this was, while it wasn't new to me, it certainly wasn't anything, you know, in my now, one and a half, close to a year and a half or so that I've been on the board, that, you know, we've dealt with as a topic. And I think that this kind of policy just merits a yearly review, set into the calendar year at one particular point, be it the beginning of the fiscal year or the beginning of the school year or somewhere, just so that we refresh ourselves on it. Because it's easy for this, for it to get lost in the middle of the policy book, yeah, it's there, and I think this is a very important policy, because it's the cornerstone of what we do individually and together. And so that was why I asked that we review it tonight, and I'm actually going to make a motion in a few minutes that we take a vote to endorse this policy, and perhaps that we, you know, we do that each year, that we then endorse this policy. We got a '93 adoption date, we, you know, we don't have to prove it, because it's already approved, but that we, you know, we do endorse this policy on a yearly basis.
You know that you did, when you did your policy review, you have this policy in your new policy book--
Yes.
-- revised, because there was a couple of words like "my," and I noticed you changed it to "our," but that we did make some adjustments on this, so this will also be updated, virgin, same content, but updated for you also.
It won't be 181, it'll be--
It won't be by law 181, because obviously, but it's under, I forget which letter it's under, but it's under school board organization kind of thing.
And as I recall, the substance really didn't change much at all.
You know, perhaps, Mr. Chairman, there are several policies. We're not going to review the whole policy book on a yearly basis for, you know, yeah, we think this is a good idea. But perhaps, you know, perhaps we should take a look at it over the next period of months and see if there aren't a half a dozen policies that we should review on a yearly basis, just to keep us focused, you know, our eye on the ball, about, you know, what we're here to do. And I don't think we lose it individually, but sometimes, I think it's good for the public to hear us reviewing our responsibilities, and so that they also understand that we have a duty, we have certain ways that we have to act, by our own policy and by law. And sometimes that friend line at the end is, you know, there's two things you can get stuck in there. Somebody knocks on the door and they come to you with a problem. They expect you to solve it, or they expect you to direct them in the right direction. And that's the one that I think is the easiest to get stuck on, which is seven, that if contacted by a parent or other citizen about a school problem, we will point out how important it is to follow a proper chain of command, and that if avenues of appeal have been exhausted, the complaint should seek recognition on a meeting agenda. It doesn't mean we don't listen to the person with a concern, but it means that we direct them back to the appropriate person who should hear their complaint, and that we help them navigate that process. And I think that's the best way for us to help the public, and that number seven is the one that often gets us stuck, as friends and family members, you know, here in town as we sit in a public position.
Linda, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I was going to say, I really like that idea, and, you know, perhaps a good time of year to do this is when, you know, after the elections, when we have, when we establish the new board for the upcoming year, you know, that we review kind of the roles and responsibilities, so that the new, anyone new to the board will be a part of that as well. It's a good idea.
Any other comments before, I guess, I'll hear a motion shortly?
I'd like to make a motion that we take a vote to endorse the continuance of, or the continued emphasis of this policy in our actions as a board, both individually and as a group.
I'll second that.
Any discussion at this point? Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. So what's the best way to make sure that this is on our calendar?
I was just thinking about that.
I think Linda's got the right timing.
Yeah.
I'd like to do this. Pull out those policies that Forrest just described, list them, and then that would be a, those policies that you would do the first meeting in June or the last meeting in May. I guess the election is the first, well, it depends, it falls funny, so let me say the first of June, your first meeting in June, to review those policies. So let me put together those policies and come up with a way in which that will happen. I mean, that's important, so--
Kathleen, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Being the new policy person, I guess--
Yes, you will.
That maybe the person in this role would be the one that brings, takes the initiative to bring those policies.
Excellent. And you and I, on our next policy meeting, could go and pull out those important ones? Okay.
Great.
Does that meet? Great suggestion.
Great.
And meanwhile, some of us will try to get it in our outlook, so that we're reminded when it comes around.
Well, you also do an agenda for your meetings. I mean--
Right.
-- you created an agenda for the entire year this year, and so that should be on the agenda. I mean, I can tell you what you're going to be doing in June now, so that ought to be added to your agenda.
Mm-hmm.
And then the policy person, in this case Jill, would bring them forward.
Great.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
I think the last, oh, I'm sorry.
No, please.
Okay. The last policy was the weapons on the school property, and I believe this was reviewed at one of the policy meetings, and there was an asterisk on the second paragraph where-- Kathleen, am I supposed, we had talked about the, okay, I just want to make sure that, where there was a concern because there was, I think, faculty members such as the head of facilities, custodians, the industrial arts teacher, that needed to periodically use pocket knives in order to get their work done or their goals accomplished. And Kathleen and I had talked about the policy, and I, I guess my recommendation was that this is, this policy was really for students, it's under the J category, so I believe that goes under the whole students category, and I felt that sticking something in that had to do with a faculty member didn't really flow with the whole policy. It just seemed to stand out, and so that maybe if we had concerns about weapons or such issues with the faculty members, maybe it would be a separate policy that we put together to address that issue. I don't know how people felt about that.
Where this, as those at home don't have it in front of them--
I'm sorry.
-- this addresses students and members of the public who happened to be in the building, I think, right? It's--
Weapons, yeah. This policy applies to students and members of all of the public alike. Weapons are not permitted on school property and school vehicles or at school-sponsored activities. And then it just gives more detail as to what a weapon is considered, and then what the, I guess, the consequences would be if someone did not follow the policy or the rules. So I just, my recommendation is maybe to address that situation separately, because I just think it would stand out here, and then people would say, well, what about the staff? Should they be in this policy too? And what are their, what are the requirements of, what are they being held, you know, accountable for? So I just feel like it might be a separate, a separate policy to put together or pull. Maybe we already addressed this in another policy, and we can find that policy too. But I'm not sure, I wasn't at the meeting, so I'm not sure exactly what that--
Forrest, do you have--
I'm not certain it was this policy that brought on that discussion.
Yeah, it was.
And it may have been the discussion was triggered by the older version of the policy, because the language seems to be a little different than this one. So without having them to compare, I don't see the problem in this policy that perhaps existed. Maybe we were--
We were looking at the older versions.
I'm wondering if we've addressed that issue that came up in the creation of this newer version of the policy, and--
And I did run this policy. There were a number of policies that you asked that I run by the Teachers Association for their review, and, you know, they concurred with all this, they supported all of this, and they supported the language. They also recognized the fact that on occasion, some teachers, because of the work that they do, are going to have something that would be considered a weapon, so that's where the, you know, the board was. But this doesn't really talk about it like that.
I think the older version of the policy specifically mentions staff, and this one does not, and that may have been what generated the discussion.
Because it refers to members of the public also, that's what got the discussion going.
In the employee handbook, there must be--
Yeah, I'm just wondering, the teachers get a handbook.
Yeah, we should check and see what the--
Faculty.
Yep.
And definitely, we're revising the employee handbook, so I made a note to make sure that's part of it, so.
That's the place it belongs.
Yes.
So are we looking for action on this policy tonight, or do we want to consider when we look at the rest of the policy manual and take that in as a total?
To keep it within the context of the policy manual.
Okay.
Go through that.
You've reviewed this several times already, so I just, it was a question you had, and I gave that to Jill for her consideration. That's why I came back again.
Why don't we follow up at the next policy meeting--
Yep.
--and see if it's in the handbook?
Yep.
And when we do approve of the policy, at least I can have--
Yep.
I think this is a great example of how thorough both your and Paul Robinson and Jill, now your review, and including, you know, getting, gathering feedback from the faculty in general, some of the health policies, some of the school nurses. This isn't just a recollection by Annette, this is a lot of work by Annette, but a lot of people--
I'll tell you, though, she had a very, very big smile on her face when she finished collating and putting all of the, we have all of our policies now under one binder, yep, but she was, she had a very big smile on her face, because it was an incredible undertaking.
Thank you, Annette.
She's home, as you know, we're doing the minutes.
She'll catch us on TV at some point. She always tells us about how we looked on the air.
Yes, she does.
Thank you, Jill. Mr. Bob Coffey is here to discuss alternative energy sources. Thank you for your patience, Bob, and welcome.
Give us a second. I don't think we said this up yet. Administrator, do you have a question?
No, just keep going.
Should've done this before.
So many people use this. Can you, Annette?
Yeah. Yep.
Question?
I've given to you at the beginning of the meeting basically the slides, so if you wanted to take some notes, you could do that.
Where's he going to stay? Bob, where am I going to? He's right here. Are you going to stay?
Yeah, I'm making sure I get the microphone.
Yeah.
Do you want to shut the lights?
Yeah.
Oh, that's okay.
We'll shut up the lights real quick. Chad, are you going to sit up there?
I'm all set.
Yeah, Chad's got the good seats to screen.
About a year ago, there was an energy audit done at both the elementary school and the high school, and Kathleen asked me if I would come and dissect the information that was provided to or from Pan American Solutions, and so I went through the reports, and this is my interpretation of what he's saying. Matthew Ferry came from Pan American Power Solutions. He did his audit on October 11th, toured both of the schools, and this is basically a report of his findings. And I think if you think about this, as we go through this in the context of, we have to think about the capital improvement program, because I know you're going through that process now, and there may be some short-term things that you can do, there may be some long-term things that you can do, and maybe something in the middle, and this might help you, from the energy and boiler and lighting side, put this down as a stake in the ground. I want to go through the other-- I'm going to go through the elementary school findings, and I'll do the high school findings, and then I'll give the recommendations. And what I found very interesting when I was reading the two reports, how similar both the schools were, even though one's a different size than the other, they both have very similar problems. So you can see a lot of the same words used in both of the reports. Both of the schools are not designed with energy efficiency in mind. Schools were built 20 years ago, 50 years ago, 70, 80 years ago. Energy efficiency was not something that we were thinking about. Today, obviously, energy is something that we really want to think about, especially with $90 a barrel oil. Heating and ventilation systems, I know you guys are well aware of this, that they're not balanced. Sometimes there's heat going on, and people are too hot in the next room, they're too cold. And there may not be a balance in the ventilation system. The boilers, in Matthew's opinion, is that they're oversized, and that's what they typically do. So you're using more fuel than you may need to use in order to get the same amount of heat. Obviously, 20-year-old boilers prone to failure and no backups. So that's a particular problem that he's found at the elementary school. The other things that he found is electrical load close to max. So if you look at all of the power being used in the building and the electrical panels, you're really up there. A bulk of the power is used for HVAC, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. The trailers are heated by electric heat, which is very expensive, at 15 cents a kilowatt hour, and has minimal insulation. I know you're all aware of that. I found this interesting. The oil boilers admit approximately 649,000 pounds of carbon dioxide per year. And that's linked to higher risk of respiratory ailments and heart disease. And I talked to Matthew about this, so, six, nine months ago, and he said, you really can't see it, but sometimes when the weather is just right, and if you happen to be flying over, you actually can see a little bit of a cloud around a building. So one way that you can eliminate this, we'll talk about this, is Matthew's opinion is to go to like a micro CHP system. And we'll get into that in a few seconds. During the study, he showed that you're using about 25,000 gallons of oil at the elementary school, but you have used upwards of 35,000 gallons in other years. During the winter heating months, just about 2,200 hours, they calculated, you're using 11.3 gallons an hour to heat the building, the elementary school. I found that was like incredible number. He also figured that the efficiency of the boilers are about 40 to 50 percent. So what that basically means, for every 10 gallons of oil used, five to six of the gallons go up the chimney, and it's not really being used for heating. And one of the things that he's described to me in the past is that on the inside of the tank, where, you know, the fire takes place, that the oil forms a film around the inside of the boiler. So you don't get full combustion of the oil. And that's what creates the efficiency to go down over time. So when it's a brand-new boiler, it operates very well. But as you're getting on an age like 20 years old, your efficiencies really go down. Last, I think, two years ago, you used about 360,000 kilowatt hours, of which it was cost about $51,600 bucks, a lot of money. So if you look at all of your total costs, electricity, $51,600, heating, $48,000, a total of $100,000. There's 8,760 hours in a year, so you're looking at a cost of about $11.42 an hour. I found that an interesting number. It just sort of breaks it down in a different perspective. The high school, not designed with energy efficiency in mind. Heating and ventilation systems, not balanced. In some rooms, you have air conditioning, and other areas, I think some of the staff areas right off of the main office, you should have some sort of air conditioning, and there's really no ventilation there. They're in enclosed offices. Boiler is oversized. High demand because of Jim Halide lighting. What he was describing is that the type of lighting fixtures that you had, and I think you might have changed them, but what you had at that time, you could reduce the, your energy consumption by 20 to 30 percent. That will also reduce the amount of power going through your circuit breaker box. And the next slide shows you that if you put your hand on it, it's a little warm or hot because you're using a lot of juice. This should be able to cool that off a little bit, which is a good thing. Current boilers prone to failure, no backup. We talked about the electrical load maxed out. That should be taking place with the new lighting. The oil boiler, in his opinion, was giving out 761,000 pounds of carbon dioxide at the high school. Considerable amount of particulate emissions. So boilers that are old tend to give out a lot of particles out of the chimney, as well as not really burning the fuel efficiently. There again, at the high school, in the particular time he was looking at it, you used about 29,000 gallons of heating oil, have used upwards of 35,000, probably more. Use an average of 13 gallons an hour at the high school, 40 to 50 percent. We talked about that. 615,000 kilowatt hours used. I think if you reduce the lighting that you've already done, you should see a decrease in the amount of kilowatt hours and demand charges. So at this point in time, you have $143,000 in cost at the high school, and that comes to $16.34. So on the one hand, you can say $16 an hour, that's a lot of money. But when you consider the size of the building, 80,000 square feet, $16 an hour, you know, not an unreasonable number. Recommendation, occupancy sensors. I know at a lot of offices where the light switches are, they have these little sensors so that if you leave the room, and after 10 minutes, the lights automatically shut off. So if you put those in, and I think they cost somewhere between $30 and $40 an outlet or a switch, that will help reduce your lighting when there's nobody in the room. I remember when our kids were growing up, and I would go around and shut off the lights behind them because they would be on for hours and hours and hours. Now, they have kids of their own, and they're doing the same thing. Replace any remaining incandescent lamps. I don't know if you've done that, if there are. I think some of the spotlights out in front had incandescent lamps. Energy management upgrade. I think what they're really looking here is you should be able to put some energy management systems in where you'd be able to, via computer, see what's happening with the boiler. See what's happening with lighting and with power. And we have some other alternative energies discussions. I'll talk about it at the last slide. HVAC system, replace boilers with CHP, high efficiency, and a high-efficiency boiler. We'll talk about that in a few minutes. Destratification. Heat rises. You've got a big gym. A lot of the heat is in the ceiling of the gym. And one of the things that we should do is maybe put in some ceiling fans or some sort of movement of the area, get that heat back down to the floor level. And that would be true in both the elementary school and the high school. And install VFDs. A VFD is a variable frequency drive. I'll give you an example. My industry is the water, wastewater business, and you have 100 horsepower motors. And if you get 100 horsepower motor going from zero to 100 horsepower like that, your electric charges go through the roof, and you're paying high demand charges. So what they do is they put these variable frequency drives, and they take the start of the motor, and they take it as an incremental. So over the course of a minute or two, it slowly ratchets it up to 100 horsepower. So you don't get the demand charges, which really costs a lot of money, and it helps you reduce your overall cost. So that's something that on various motors and fans, that you may want to think about putting in these smaller variable frequency drives. The ones we have at the water wastewater plants are $20,000, $30,000, and they're in a big box. But you can get some smaller ones as well. High school, same thing. Replace lighting, occupancy sensors, energy management system. Replace boilers, destratification, and install VFDs. I'm working with a group called Echo Power Hedge, and they're actually located in New Fields. And they're doing studies on what they anticipate. Oil and natural gas and electricity is going to be between now and 20 years from now. And I thought that this would be an important slide to have because when you're talking about numbers today, you're thinking everything is static. Oil's going to be this, electric is going to be that. But over the next 20 years, what is, what are we looking at? We're looking at an average 8 percent increase in electric cost a year. PSNH just recently raised their generation charges about 1.1 cent a kilowatt hour, which comes to about 14 percent. I think the average is going to be eight, the high is going to be somewhere on 12 as the annual increase for electricity. Oil, right now, they believe there's a $20 premium because of all of the political turmoil over in the Middle East and down in Venezuela. So oil really should be maybe $65 or $70 a gallon, but because of the uncertainties, they put this premium on it. Currently, oil's $3.10 a gallon-ish. And they believe that it's going to be moving up closer to $4 a gallon. And I talked to Sue a couple of weeks ago, and I think you have it at $2.39 for the year. You guys did an awesome job on that. So you're protected for the next year. But who knows what's going to happen next June when you go out to bid. Electric bills are made up of three things. They're made up of transmission charges. They're the big towers that have those big high-power lines. You have distribution charges, which are your local lines out in front of your house, and then you have generation charges. Generation charges, you can now go out and select your generator to generate power. So we're actually looking at a way, where I work at, to buy power directly from the New England Power Pool. And if we do that for four wastewater plants, we're going to save $150,000 a year. It's a way that you can save a lot of money. Transmission charges, you really can't do much on. Distribution charges, that's what's called kilowatt demands. And if you have lots of lighting that's inefficient, and you have people that leave lights on all the time, there's a little, usually an arrow or an indicator on the electric meter called demand charge. And what it does is if you turn all the lights on at one time in the building and all the computers on at one time, this line would go up, and you'd have a very high demand charge. And that's, that charge is what they charge you for a year. And that could be upwards of 50 percent of your electric bill. So by reducing the amount of power that you need, those demand charges will go down. And not only can you reduce your generation costs, but you can also reduce your demand charges, and you can start saving significant amount of money on your electric cost. Does that make sense? Okay. This is Matthew's recommendation to put in a micro CHP system. And I'm going to show you what one looks like. And a high-efficiency condensing boiler. And a micro CHP system is a combined heat and power system. It runs on natural gas or LP, so obviously, we would need to do LP here. It produces both power and heat, and it's a significant reduction of CO2 emissions upwards of 90 percent. How it produces power and heat, it's basically a boiler with a generator on it. And when the boiler kicks in, then that generator turns on, and it produces power for your building. So one fuel source does two things instead of one fuel source doing heat and one fuel source doing electricity. This is an interesting diagram, and I'm just going to go up here and show you the flow here. This is the Echo Power Hedge unit, which is a micro CHP. You have your gas supply coming in. You have power coming out to your circuit breaker box. And if you are generating power and you're using power during the day, that goes right into the school. So you're not buying power from Public Service of New Hampshire. At the end of the day, when all the lights are out, if it's generating electricity, then that power goes out to the grid, and you can sell it back to the grid. It has hot and cold water going into a hot water storage tank. And from here, that's where the heat goes for the whole building. So instead of having one big boiler churning on and then sending heat throughout the building, this unit turns on, goes to a hot water storage tank, and then is taken out for the rest of the school. Now, the benefit of doing this, Matthew's recommending, I think, eight in each of the buildings. These are small washing machine, Maytag washing machine sized machines. The benefit of doing something like this is in September and October, you may only need one or two to churn on to get heat in the building for like hot water so kids can wash their hands and wash the floors. But if you have these big boilers and it needs heat, you've got to turn this huge boiler on. It's like a V8 engine that you've got to warm up. You're spending a lot of fuel just to get it up to temperature, where these guys are small, and you're just doing what you really need. It's in a series. So if in the middle, in, you know, in the summertime, you might have one running. Then in the fall, you might have two or three. Then in winter, you might have all eight. And then when you get back in the springtime, it goes back down to six. Or on a real nice day in the middle of January, when it gets up to 32 degrees, you might only need four engines running because that's what the demand is within that building. So just by that definition, you're saving money on your fuel cost. You're not starting this huge engine up, this boiler, just to heat a building for 10 or 15 minutes. So to me, this sort of makes economic sense as well as, you know, extra power. This also helps me reduce the demand charge because if I'm taking power right from these units, I don't have as much of a demand coming from Public Service of New Hampshire. Just a different diagram of the same thing. We can add solar collectors on here, if you look to the right-hand side. There's new technology out there called nano-solar, which is supposedly going to really reduce the cost of, of power, of a solar panel. And we're looking into that. You can use it for hot water, you can use it for heat, and it's a pretty cool thing, and also electricity. That's what one unit looks like. It's about the size of a Maytag washing machine. It would need to be inside a building. So you probably, in the elementary school, you probably would have to take out the old boilers and put these in there. I'm not sure about the high school because I'm not, you'd have to really take out that old boiler, and you may not want to touch that. So you may want to put another little building outside and house these units. Cost savings. Elementary school, cost of the equipment is about $250,000. Sounds like a lot of money, but let's go through the whole thing. You're going to eliminate your oil charges. You're not going to buy oil anymore. Significantly reduce your electric cost because it's generating power for the school. Your boiler maintenance goes away. On the additional cost, you have to move over to LP gas. And we've been talking to Eastern Propane and some other guys, and there are ways that we can help minimize the cost of LP gas. If they, they say, if you could upsize the tank, and we only had to make one delivery at one time, and we do it every month and a half, that really reduces the cost that we have to charge. And there may be some ways that we can save money there. And ongoing maintenance. What I like about this machine is that every 4,000 hours, you do an oil change and a spark plug change. It's about 200 bucks. About every 40,000 hours, you have to put in a new machine. And a new machine costs you about 3,000 bucks. The engine weighs 200 pounds. So you unbolt four bolts, you unplug four different plugs, and hook a hot water line. And you can physically lift it out and put a new machine in. So from going down the boiler perspective, it's kind of hard to do that on a big boiler. But on these guys, you can do it very easily. And with eight machines there, you have enough of a redundancy that you shouldn't have to worry about the boiler going out. And oh my God, what do we do? The anticipated savings per year. So think about the amount of money that I got to put into the project. Or I reduce my oil cost, I reduce my electrical cost, I add back in the cost for LP gas, I add back in the cost of maintenance. I'm going to save about $46,000 a year. And that's going to give you a payback about five and a half years. And then after that, it's $46,000 a year in your pocket. Same outline for the high school, all the same things. About the same amount of savings, $46,000. So right between those two, you're going to save about $90,000, $92,000 a year. After, and with a payback of five years after that, it's all quote-unquote profit to you. More money in your pocket. Conclusion. Big fixes first. You've got to do something about the boilers. Not only do you have the CO2 problem, who knows what's going to happen with oil, but they're old, and they really need to be replaced. You need, in his opinion, you install these micro CHP systems. Now, as a matter of fact, Epping is installing two of those engines in their town hall. They may be in by now, or they will be in shortly. And they're connecting it to a solar panel, and they're going to have two of those engines put in there. And so I'm sure we'd be able to go over and see that, we'll just get ahold of Clay. Fix any lighting issues that you have, an energy management system. Small leaks, I should have put an S in there for sensors, sorry about that. Sensors in the classroom, those light switches. There's two new technologies I want to talk to you about, and I'm pretty interested in. One is called HEMs technology. Basically, it's a plug that goes into an outlet that sends a signal back to a computer. And you can see on an individual plug basis how much power is being used. And the designer of the system said, let's say you have two children, and each have their own bedroom. And you're going to allocate to them $30 a month. And you're gonna allocate them thirty dollars a month for electricity. It'll measure how much electricity they're using and will shut down somebody's room once they hit thirty dollars in electricity. I like that idea.
Are these at Home Depot?
No, not yet. It's new technology that's coming out. The other thing that I like about it is that it will help you manage your energy use. Because if you plugged it into your refrigerators and computers and monitors all throughout the school, you can see exactly what a room is costing you from an energy perspective. You can set it up so that on Friday nights, if somebody leaves monitors on, because every now and then I walk past the elementary school and you see some monitor lights on, it could shut down the monitors for you automatically on Friday night. You can set it up to do those sorts of things. So it's pretty cool technology, it's new technology coming out. The other one that I really like, it's called Siralight. And it's a concept called daylighting. And basically what it is, it's a, what do you call it? In a roof. Skylight, thank you. It's a skylight that has three mirrors on it. And it has a sensor on the top that, it's a GPS sensor that knows the exact latitude and longitude of that skylight. And it'll rotate, and when the sun starts in the morning, it follows the sun all day long. And then it goes back to the position because it knows tomorrow is gonna be first day of winter, so it's gonna be a little bit further south. And it tracks the sun. And the mirrors shine the light into the room. And you can eliminate your fluorescent lighting. And it's enough light to light up four hundred, four hundred or six hundred square feet. So now a classroom is getting natural lighting. And each one of these units, I think, is about eleven hundred dollars or twelve hundred dollars somewhere in that neighborhood. So to me, these are some exciting things that are coming down the pipeline that if you think about energy efficiency, these might be some ways that you could do that. I mean, you could potentially retrofit the gym and get rid of those lights for most of the day. Now, they showed some studies that I've just seen some recent literature on. Some typical stories out in Southern California, they might, in a typical skylight, have lighting in a place for two or three or four hours a day. But with a Siralight, they'd get it for nine hours. So in essence, you're shutting off your lighting for nine hours. That's kind of cool concepts. So there's a lot of that technology starting to come down the pipeline. HEMs technology, right now, I think the plugs are forty or forty-five dollars a plug. So you wouldn't outfit your whole building, but as you have to replace plugs, that might be the way to go. And, you know, the software, I'm sure we can do something with the software and get that all set up. These might be some cool things to do. So going back as a summary, Matthew's recommendations are fix the big leaks first, do something with your boilers, look at the micro CHP, that might be a real savings for you. And now that we have a real live location over in the next town, we can probably go over and kick the tires and see what it's like. Give them a few months' worth of testing. I did ask a question today on what would some new boilers cost? And I got a quote from a guy that knows this stuff, and he said for the elementary school, you're looking at thirty-five to forty-five thousand dollars ish. And on the high school, I gave him the wrong BTUs, so I'm upsizing it. You're probably looking at maybe seventy to eighty thousand dollars for a new boiler at the, at the high school. So with that, I mean, with the new boilers, if you have your CIP program, you can start sending some money aside. There may be some financing opportunities that we can put here that wouldn't cost you any money and that the savings realized would pay for all of the equipment. We probably could talk to some people and bring them in. I have some guys that are very interested in doing those sorts of things. So we could fix the lighting, we can put in the HEMs technology, we could do the Marathon Engines and that sort of thing. So those are options that you have available too. Any questions?
Those individual boiler, engine units. You would cluster them all in one place or would you want?
Yep. Matthew was suggesting that you probably put seven of them in the boiler room at the elementary school. And then we would put one and retrofit the two trailers over at the elementary school and get you off of the electric charges for heating up those buildings. So that might be an option that you could look at. And then certainly for the high school, you would put in eight units. I don't think I'd wanna touch the boiler in the high school. I think if you just shut it down and say, see you later, and away you go.
So in the elementary school, is it practical to fit that many units in the current boiler room?
You could actually, you can put these on a shelf and you can put one on top of another. So it's not like you have to have eight units side by side. You can stack them, so you can have four racks of two each. And then if you have enough room around them to walk around them, then you should be fine. Now specifically, we'd have to do measurements and stuff like that. But I think that that would be something that you'd be worthwhile investigating. Now, the gentleman, that's the sales manager for Marathon Engines, which is this micro CHP system, is gonna be here in January. So I could have him come on over and take a look. He's actually gonna be in Epping and have him take a look and give you some ideas of what he would think about. There is another company that does something similar to this, it's called Aizen. Aizen is twenty-five percent owned by Toyota. And we're very intrigued by their engines, but they're not committed to the marketplace yet. And all the engines that they have out there is everything's in Japanese, so I don't think we wanna go down that path just yet. But those are, that's another option of this type of machine.
Is this different terminology, micro CHP, for what we were talking about last year with the microturbine?
We looked at the microturbine, and microturbine is about four hundred thousand dollars to install. And after looking at the analysis, the, your heating load would be significantly, significantly less than what this machine would put out. And the payback would be about fourteen years. So we said, you know, it doesn't make sense to do that. So if you can figure out ways to reduce your electric cost, then we can, these machines should be able to take care of most of your heating needs, except for the very coldest days in January and February. And part of his recommendation is you put another little boiler in there to help give it a boost if it needs some extra heat.
A question, the smaller, the units that we're talking about, they last about forty thousand hours.
Yep.
Under five years.
You're assuming that they operate twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. They wouldn't operate twenty-four hours a day. So they probably would, you'd probably get seven to ten years out of them. Especially if you do them so that like one starts up and then the next one starts up and then they cycle. And then on the next round, the number two engine would be the primary, the lead, and the rest of them would be the lag. And then on the next cycle, number three would be the lead and they would be the lag. So you're probably looking at ten years before you would need to do anything like that. In that maintenance fee that we talked about in here, it's included in, you know, you set aside this amount of money so that in eight years, nine years, you have the money to replace the engine. And you're only talking three or four thousand dollars, it's a Briggs and Stratton engine. It's not like rocket science, it's not a weird technology. Any other questions?
You would have to put a gas tank in somewhere?
You'd have to put an LP tank somewhere? In talking to the guys at Eastern Propane about how, not necessarily on the school, but on some other projects we're looking at, they would like to bury the tank because you get a higher BTU value out of the tank than you would if you kept it above ground. So I think as part of the project, you'd have to bury the tank and then you'd be, you'd be getting a bigger bang for your buck. And I think, the sense that I got in conversations with them on some of the projects we're looking at, you're probably looking at a fifty or sixty cent savings over what other people would get charged for this if we did it right, if we sized it properly. Which, you know, sixty cents is sixty cents. So this kind of concept makes sense to you? Okay. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
No, no problem.
I would think that we should make a point to talk to those folks in January get a chance to see how it looks with our space and.
Sure. I'll talk to Mike after the first of the year, right now when he's coming, and then we'll have him come on over. Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
That little cloud over the elementary school. Knowing my kids are just starting school, it makes me real nervous.
Thank you, thanks very much.
Kathy, it seems that we should, I know that you've had some discussions with our architect regarding, with the Cheney property, retooling the entranceways. I'm wondering if maybe that's something you should throw into that conversation if you haven't already.
And this is very good timing because, you know, the, it's twenty years, almost twenty years at your elementary school. Your boilers are, Sue has actually asked Brian to give us some prices on new boilers. So the timing of, of course, the report was done, and we were just waiting for a good time to present it. But this is really excellent timing because we have to do something at the elementary school. As you know, Dan is drawing up a design with a playfield and Cheney and a new driveway and a new entrance and all that. I haven't gotten anything yet from him, but I'll give him a call and tell him that we need a place to drop an oil tank.
A submarine.
I just, what size would that be, that tank at the elementary school? What are we talking about for size of a tank?
Don't know yet.
Yeah, okay.
We haven't really talked about.
All right.
It depends on how many units and what their flow rate would be.
Right, and they want a bigger one so that that's less number of times they come. That is significant savings when you do things like that and buy in bulk and all that, yeah.
You could take it directly from the terminal, if it's big enough.
Yeah, and these guys really wanna go down this path.
Right, okay. Eastern Propane, right?
That's who we're talking about.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
I have a contact name you need?
Well, we'll talk, I'll call you. All right, thank you. Thanks. Very good timing.
It is very good timing. It'd be great if, I mean, layering it into our current budget, it seems, I mean, the payoff time of.
Four and a half years isn't bad, is it?
No, that's, that's pretty quick.
That's the lighting retrofit that he talked about that we did, that was a four and a half to five-year payoff. The metal highlights that were in the gym, we did replace those for that reason.
In the music room?
In the music room. And we looked at a lot of the lighting in the buildings to see if there was any other ways to save. So that's an ongoing thing, it's just, you know, timing and the sensors. I've looked at the sensors in the rooms. The recommendation I got for those kind of things is if you're not building a new building, it's not real cost-effective to replace what your existing building has. We do track all of our energy on a regular basis and look at it. Unfortunately, I'm not a maintenance facilities person, so what to do with all of that data is, it's kind of, we're in a position where we're not sure. We need someone like Bob to analyze that and look at that to see what, you know, our best options are. But we do look at a lot of these things, Kathleen, you and I, as much as we can. I've attended a number of conferences where they talked about a couple of the new energy efficiency things that are coming out. They've talked about that, and it's the latest and greatest, and it's out there. So, you know, if we could jump on board and do some of these things, it'd be great. And I think maybe in our capital improvements plan, we oughta look at that and put some money in if we think, just at least to have that out there so we know that that's something we might wanna consider. So that was great for him to bring that to us.
We have solar panels at the high school, and we got those back up and operating. And, you know, the energy, the power that we gain from that, just the solar panels on the roof at the high school is lighting one room. I mean, little things like that are gonna help us over the long haul, as you know, this isn't today. And I think Bob emphasized that, it's really long-term thinking.
Thinking of the elementary school now, the boiler's upstairs, isn't it? Isn't it in an up area that we looked at?
No.
What's up in that second story that they have, like a storage?
I think those are just all the air exchange units up there, you know, it's part of the heating and ventilation system that, because we did go up there, remember?
Solar panels would work nice up there.
Yes.
We can't build up on the elementary school anyway, that'd be a good use.
But even carving holes in, installing skylights, that, I mean, it's certainly not something I'm ready to do right away. But, boy, there's some interesting.
But these things are ideal as you begin to consider the energy needs of a new facility, should, you know, should you get to that point. I mean, these are clearly things you have to think about.
I'm also, just wanna make a note that when I was reading the report a couple of times, I was concerned about the, they had taken some of the vents, pieces of the vent off to, for, and it affects the airflow. I think it had to do with, what's the word he called, balanced? That it's all, the system is all balanced, and they were trying to pull some of the vents off to try to balance it more or something. And I just, I'm not sure if I'm exactly quoting it right, but I just am concerned about that. And I would like to address that when we do talk about if that's a possibility for them to fix those or repair those or whatever needs to be done to make sure that they are in place and safe and the air is flowing properly. That concerns me.
Was that at the elementary school or?
Yeah, I think it was at the elementary school.
All right, let me look at that.
Check that out. Is it over the gym in the la, I don't know, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Certainly balancing HVAC systems in buildings that might not have been built with.
With that in mind.
With that in mind can be difficult. But if we're going to undertake something at the elementary school sometime far down the road, it might be an opportunity while we're putting in sprinklers or what have you to look at some of those things.
And I also would like to make sure we look at the electricity at the elementary school because they said that it's hot to the touch and they were saying with the changes in the gym lighting that that has helped to.
Right, that's at the high school.
Right, but at the element, I thought the elementary school was where it was hot to touch.
Believe we had that issue at the high school and we replaced that panel.
Yep.
We did have that earlier in the year.
We've not had that problem at the elementary, no. It's the high school with the demand on those electrical boxes. We actually knew that we would reduce it by the changes in the music room and in the gym. And in addition to that, we replaced one of our electrical panels this summer.
Okay. School district goals, we, this is something that we, as I recall, postponed from the last meeting as that evening wore along. So just wanna take a little bit of time to make a quick review of our goals.
Well, can I jump in and just kind of?
Please do.
Yeah, I think that the thing that I want, the most important thing right now is that all of these things are ongoing by the staff. I mean, they're all working on these things. There are a couple of things, though, that we've already had recommendations. For instance, the second bullet on learning experiences for all students, objective number one. They really have backed off on the advanced placement world language class. And the reason for that is, is that we offer level four and five. And they felt that that met the needs of the students. And to go to the next level of an advanced placement foreign language, they didn't see that there was a need for it at this time. So they, they really feel that they're addressing students in foreign language at level four and five. Five meaning that's their fifth year of a foreign language. They had it in middle school and then four years of high school. So that was the one on this first page that, that they've, they said, you know, we looked at it, we're not recommending that we make any changes in the current delivery of foreign language.
What are the languages at the, that they're doing in these world language classes?
Spanish and French. Now, we have some students who have taken virtual high school foreign language classes, a variety of them. The one area that we got feedback on was obviously the speaking part of a foreign language. And the youngsters feel that that's a disadvantage of the virtual high school.
Can a student take the advanced placement exam if they don't?
After level five, yes. Yes, and we have had students do that. So you don't have to be in an advanced placement class to take the exam. Obviously, you have to have the experiences, but.
After level five?
Well, in all, most cases, it would be, Lynda, because they would've taken it in middle school and then gone through. and then gone through the four years at high school and they would have been a senior when they took that advanced placement class. So, it, it naturally falls into their fifth year.
Okay.
But I don't want to rule out the fact that there may be some very exceptional language who don't have five years. Who may be a fourth year language student.
You don't have to have ever taken the class to go take the AP exam.
True.
You can sign up for any AP exam you wish, whether you've had a class or not, so. If somebody feels, the difference with AP is to AP classes and our level fives, when you go to take the AP test, it's not just your reading, writing and speaking, it's also interpretation of literature in that tongue. And that's, that's the crux of how AP, the test can be different. It's not just your ability to, to communicate, you have to analyze, be able to have read and analyze literature in the language.
And that's probably the, the greatest challenge in terms of the curriculum is that literature piece in foreign language. And that's what, that's what they, they all report. So, they have to have that exposure to that literature.
There, there is currently opportunity to take AP class, foreign language classes through virtual high schools, isn't there?
Yes.
So, they do, so we still have that.
Oh, yeah.
Do we have any students doing that now?
I don't know, Chet, that's a great question. Just going back to look at last year's. We did not last year. They were much in the sciences and math and English, not in the foreign language last year. It, it varies. The year before we did, we had several students who were really exceptional in foreign language. As a matter of fact, they went on to colleges to study foreign language. I know several of them were in Spanish and went on to the university to study. So, they did, but that, last year we did not. I hope that, we, we've been looking at the, that was one of the questions about our, the rigor. Do you remember the questions around our, our program and does it, do the courses that students take in Newmarket allow them to compete at tier one colleges and universities? So, Tom and that department is still looking at that. So, I hope I have a report to you in late January, early February. On that objective, I don't know if there's anything else. I would say all of those practices, all of the, the actions and the measures are being worked on. The advisories will be in full implementation next year, which was one of your goals. We will continue to provide training and we have another training session in our last training of the year in May. So, when we open next year, we'll have advisories six through twelve, which is one of your goals, which has been very positive. I just reviewed the proposal by the middle school relative to their initiatives around their special education group in terms of meeting AYP, because that was an area that was designated as needing improvement. And I just read their report, which will be submitted to the state, and they're really focusing on professional development of staff and multiple opportunities, a hundred minutes actually, they've added minutes and they're going to block off time so that youngsters who are struggling with reading will have more opportunity for reading instruction at the middle school, so. Those are ongoing.
That's similar to what we did at the elementary.
That's right, that's right.
Isn't there, there were a few articles in the paper about the initiatives behind special educator certifications and that they want them to focus more on the, the training of the special educators to make sure that they're able to address the areas such as that. So, we're kind of moving in the same direction.
Right, and the University of New Hampshire is really taking the lead role on that training for special educators. So, it's perfect because, you know, then, you know, our teachers will have access to that, so. But that is ongoing. I don't know if there's any questions on, on.
Anyone have any specifics they'd like to address or generalities?
Well, you're going to go, you're touching upon each goal.
Yeah, do you want to go to number two? I didn't, you know, this one is around accountability and assessment. And again, we have, our teachers are now using performance pathways and we're going to come in with a presentation. That's all part of the student information systems. We have our test data, both the state assessment and the NEWS that we do here is now up on our site and our teachers are accessing information. The, the one piece we don't have access yet is AIMS, the AIMS test, you know, the reading fluency. But we'll have to, we haven't quite figured out how we're going to get that in yet, but we can. It's just a matter of how and when and how much, so. The state's paying for the other piece, it's all free. But if we add a third piece of data to that, then we have to pay for it, so. We're figuring out how to do that. But the other data, student, student's attendance is on there, all kinds of data about youngsters. So, the teachers just click on and it's, and they really enjoy it, so they're liking it a lot. We did the survey, the My Asper, My Voice Survey, which is Student Aspirations, if you remember. We had the speaker at the community breakfast and Russ Quaglia was there. We'll have that report. I haven't seen the final report yet.
I was just going to ask.
I haven't seen it yet, I haven't seen it. I'll have to ask Mrs. Brooks.
I think that would be the board to be interested in that, I think.
I, I do too, but you haven't, you haven't received the, did you do at Central, did you do it?
Yeah, I don't know if we have it back yet or not.
Yeah, I don't, I haven't seen it.
When there were ver- you know, when there were relatively few schools, the institute could turn it around fairly quickly, I think, now that it's more of a statewide effort.
It's huge.
It's going to, you know, it's going to backlog a little more.
Impact fees, as we, it's pretty much a done deal. We just, I just reviewed and Mr. Chase has in his packet, which is upstairs, your folder is the application for the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. It's our application to become a member so that we begin that process of evaluating our high school. That was completed by the staff, that's on its way, updating school board policies. That is like ninety-eight percent done, which is, which is terrific. Did I miss anything on that page? No, I think I got them all. Is there any, anything on that?
Can I ask you a question? Could you just explain what the impact fees are just for, I think I know what they are because I've been, just for someone who might not know that's listening.
They're just a sum of money that's assessed on anyone that comes in and builds new, new buildings in the community and they're put aside to offset any additional costs that any department in the town has because of the result of new development. So, the school district has one, I believe the rec department has one, public works. And there's a proportion in those fees that is segregated for each group. And the school has a sum of money out there that we applied for and we're going to receive from the town based on what we submitted for the new building, the proposal for the new building and all the groundwork we did for that. So, we've submitted all of that to them.
Isn't that, Sue, that's based on square footage of the buildings?
As far as what they assess for an impact fee, I believe so. I'm not sure the formula or how they assess that, but there's a sum that they come up with based on the square footage, I believe, yeah, that an individual presents.
Goal number three is their own community collaboration. Again, our elementary school won the Blue Ribbon Award for volunteerism and I, we have an active parent group at the high school around project graduation, which isn't really a part of the school, but it, it's certainly involves the school, music booster club, an athletic booster club. So, we, we've tried to involve parents in any way we can around the, both our elementary and our high school. Channel thirteen, we're expanded tonight, I don't know if you saw it, but we had a music program on. The kids performed their, the high school winter concert and that was on. So, we're trying to put more and more things, activities of students on. As you know, I'm, I'm working with a team of, from the town to negotiate a new contract with Comcast. We have several employees of the town, myself and a, a community person. So, we're all working and we are putting together our proposal to present to Comcast with a number of initiatives that I believe will benefit the school district. Since it's negotiations, I'd rather not get into those details at this time, but I do believe that they will be beneficial to the, to our schools. We are updating our webpages, James and Matthew are using Joomla, which is a, a program that will allow us to transform our webpages. So, it's in the infancy stage, it's in the development stage, but it seems to be well received by those folks. I know that Kristin Kiefer, the webmaster at the high school and junior, senior high schools, has already begun to use it and it's, it's a lot of work because we're, we're actually transferring it, but we think that will, it'll be a much more active webpage for our school district.
Related to that, where are we on the parent portal?
We are.
That's how they're going to get there, is to the website.
I know. We are, we have a volunteer group, we have a group of teachers at the high school that volunteered to have that happen, so. And then they're bringing in the parents to train them and I don't have the date on that. I, I'm not sure, I think it's after the new year in January. I think they were bringing them in after, because they were trying to get all the senior stuff done for colleges. And then Tom was going to bring them in and we were going to train parents, give them their passwords and then train them about how to get in and access their, their, their classes, you know, the synopsis of their classes as well as homework assignments, that kind of thing, as well as attendance and student grades. So, that's a pilot, so. It's kind of exciting. The one area we haven't really done much work on is our accessing and developing a, a stronger relationship with our, our public library and so I hope that we'll be able to work on that one. We haven't done a lot in that area, it's still, but we do need to. Community outreach, I think today was a good example. I went up to the high school and they were doing the food baskets and the members of the basketball, boys' basketball team was there, carrying the heavy boxes out with all the food and turkeys and all the things that they put together to, they had eighty-five families that they were bringing food baskets to for the holidays and so the basketball team was there. So, we're trying to do more of that with the youngsters and have them involved in the community a little bit more.
Kathy, the students, as far as the public library, they have access to this after school students?
Yes, the public library.
Chet, do you have any ideas on how we can encourage more of that interaction from the students, you know, get them into the public library to make that, it'd be nice to make that part of, you know, habit is to go, well, I can go to the library to find that out.
Yeah, that's what I was just wondering, I like to take a walk over and see that after school at some point to come back to you people, see what that is.
See if I get a message, excuse me.
Like, like walk in once in a while.
I go in every, every other Tuesday, my daughter's in the daisy coats and, and I usually see quite a few of the, they look like they're probably sixth, seventh, eighth graders coming in and they sit down even in the tables with the younger kids are and they pull out their homework or they, they're looking for information or whatever on the computers.
Yeah, I saw that too, I saw a kid come in, pop that piece out of his homework.
Our staff has some goals that we would like to be able to access their database so that if a teacher has an assignment and we don't have the book in our library, that they can check the holdings at the public library. So, it's that kind of relationship that we would, would like to, to further develop and.
Could we get the librarian to give us a, come in and talk to us about this? The public library?
The public librarian, I would, I would be willing to talk to her about, you know, about that.
I think that'd be good.
I don't think that elementary field trips to the library, to the public library are out of the question. I think they're, I remember that's, you know, when I got my first look at the public library, I think we went in second or third grade and sort of, you know, took the tour, library had read us a story, you know, it was sort of to get you interested, there's the building. And when I was teaching seventh grade, we had a public library three blocks down the street, I made it a homework assignment. Every one of my students had to go get a library card. They were free, so it was, you know, I wasn't asked to go out to spend the money. And that was their, one of their first homework assignments, they had to have a library card. And just something to get them in there. I don't, maybe they never used it, but I know some of them did.
It's a beautiful area and it's loaded with articles.
It's a great building.
They, I was at the library this summer and there's a preschool out of the rec center and the woman who runs the preschool there actually brought the children over for a field trip to introduce them to the library before they went into kindergarten, which I thought was fun and we actually sat with them and did the whole program with them. But I was thinking the same thing, that the kindergarteners even, that would be a nice, you know, they don't have too many different field trips that I know they could tie a lot of the curriculum in because they're, they're more of a general curriculum, I think, but.
I don't know, second, third grade, you went to the public library, the fire station, the dairy.
They don't have library cards, they don't offer library cards for kids at the Newmarket Public Library until they're sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, I think. And I think that might be something that if we do talk to the librarian, we could recommend that. I, I think my kids would love that. They love to go to the library, they love to pick out books and I have to take them out on my card.
See, that's correct, you have to check them out under the parent's card.
Because it's on their card and they know it's their responsibility. So, I think that's something that even that connection would be a step in the right direction too.
The thing that concerned me was, if you remember back a few years ago, the latchkey kid, where they, they were sending to the libraries, they were causing problems in the libraries and so forth. I wonder if Newmarket was, you know, had this problem or?
Well, you know, we have two programs that are up and running, one in the elementary school linked together. And so, our youngsters are there and they're doing homework and all kinds of activities. And in the middle school, they began that program after school, so youngsters are there. So, I, I don't think we have a, a number of kids just going to the library to hang out, so to speak. I mean, I know what you're saying, I see that in, in some of the bigger towns, but I don't see that. I mean, I go over.
We'd like to have a, give us an idea of what's happening.
Right, I think that would be a great idea to have Sharon come in and, and do a presentation. Anything else on three? The first one is safety and security. I met with the chief of police, Kevin Seer, and after the new year, we're meeting and we, we're going to sit down and review our emergency management, management responses. They have some suggestions. We'd like to work together with the police and the fire and the emergency staff. Our plans are in place. We have site plans, which is required by the Department of Ed, it's a standard that we meet, and those are done. But we would like to ratchet that up a little bit. We would like to work together with our departments in town in terms of an emergency response. And they have some ideas and so we thought after the first of the year, we'd sit down and we'd begin to review that. One of the concerns that the police have is on the high school building, you know, they need to walk through that building. They need to know that building because it's not an easy building, as you know, there's nooks and crannies everywhere. And they feel that they need to have their staff walk through that building and understand that building, should there ever be a situation. The other one is facilities and you know where you're at with that and adult educational needs, we really haven't, you know, it's been, I know that that's been one of yours, Linda, you, you always, we haven't done a lot with that. With the situation at the high school, it's just so difficult, you know. But that doesn't mean we're not going to continue to do that. Under, again, support of children via the qualified teacher, that's on the page six. It really is all about our certification, candidates, HQT status of our candidates. I'm pleased to say that all of our teachers are meeting the requirements. That we only have one teacher who's on an alt plan. Everyone else has got the certification and meets the HQT, so. That's been terrific. And that one person just needs to complete one course and she'll be done in December. And she's probably done now, actually, when I think today's the twentieth. And she needs to take praxis two in math. And she needs to take Praxis Two in mathematics, and she'll be done. Our mentor program is, is great. We just had another training this week, put on by the Seacoast Professional Development Center out of Exeter. We, we provide training for our mentors so that they can work better with our brand-new teachers. We did, we're doing more professional development with our paraprofessionals. We had Kathy Simons in this last Monday. She did a reading workshop so that the teachers knew how to use all the new reading materials. So the paraprofessionals, rather, can, know how to use those to support the classroom efforts, so that continues.
Kathy, how are our paraprofessionals doing as far as computer usage is concerned?
They're actually very good. And when we have a computer training, Chat, we invite them in. It isn't like just for the teachers. We, if we have a workshop for them, we did a workshop on using the internet, email, the smart boards. And we invite them right in. Where am I? Page seven. Again, we're doing a lot of training, I'm confident of that. Chat's been sitting in on our professional development meetings. Chat was there last week. We have our plan out for the rest of the year. The staff is working on developing the new professional development plan. We need to submit a new plan in June to the state. So Pat, under the auspices of Pat Ballantyne, they're working on that. And a calendar, I have a calendar ready that will address some additional time for staff, and I'm gonna bring that to you in January. That was a big request from both the teachers and the administrators, so we'll bring that to you in January, the calendar for next year. I think that's just about it, isn't it? One more, maybe? Page eight. I think it all goes around communication. And as you know, I continue to meet with members of the town departments. They're always extremely supportive, very helpful. Rick's been very helpful these last few snow days, and I know they're working hard. We continue to do the, I have a new quarterly newsletter ready to go out. We're just, you know, all of those actions are being done, so...
Stephanie, does your quarterly newsletter that's coming out have the dates of the different?
I actually did that, the budget hearings and budget meetings, yes. Is there any other questions that?
On the evaluation of the schools and colleges, that's, that's the three-year process that we're going through? Does that have any, any bearing on that starting with year one on, on these goals? Is there anything here that we have to do as far as goals are concerned?
No, I don't think so. Right now, what you'll see is, once we receive from them, that we're accepted as a member, that will probably be in January, I think Deb said. And then, right after that, the staff will have a lot of work to do.
So we'll get, we'll get progress reports on that?
Yes, we'll be getting progress reports on their work, yes, yes, yes. And I do have a copy of the application, I meant to bring it down.
How are we gonna be involved in that, starting with year, this first year or the second year?
Well, you'll probably, you will be part of the responses to the questions.
And the third year?
I, I think they'll be in, bringing you in earlier than that. I will check with Mrs. Brooks on the timeline. I don't know it yet until we get notice in January. I don't know if there's anything else on goals. I mean, we try to do this a few times a year.
I think good to have that refresher. Thank you for escorting us through.
How often do you, how often do you revisit these goals? Or when did you last cover them, so yearly? This might be just a recommendation, this might, when you go, not the same meeting maybe, but around the same time when you have the new board stepping in. This might be something good to cover at that transition point, too.
They actually review these goal, I mean, we review them quarterly during the year.
Oh, okay.
But then, they sit down as, the board sits down as a group, we usually do it on Saturday mornings. And review everything. They take the strategic plan, we have a seven-year, five-to-seven-year strategic plan. They take that plan and then they take the information in that and apply it to these goals.
Yeah, we usually, in the summer, we have a, we hold a Saturday kind of retreat and go over this and set it for the year and then visit it on a quarterly basis.
Quarterly is what, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought you meant, when do we, how, when do we set it, when do we establish it yearly?
Last thoughts on the goals, anyone? Okay, we're going to skip the advanced placement exams discussion, as discussed earlier, and move that to the January third meetings agenda. Moving us to correspondence. None? Okay. The business department update, reserve accounts, et cetera. There's been some ongoing discussion about, surfaced in a few meetings along the way this fall, I think, with the reserve accounts that were established in the warrant articles of maybe five years ago. Now that we've got some money in those accounts, it, I thought it might be wise to take some time to talk about, well, how much money do we want to have in these, and maybe more formally, cap or set your top end for them. So I have lost track of my copy, I think.
Well, you know what, they're, they're in that handout that I left at your place, the warrant articles.
Yes, I'm wondering, maybe Forrest, do you have two?
I thought I left it.
I probably didn't.
I don't believe so, but I'll double check. Nope.
Oh, here it is. Thanks for looking, everyone. So, they, I guess maybe we should just discuss each one separately and see if it's, if we're at a point in time where we want to talk about setting a firm cap. And I guess my question, my first question is, how do we do that? You know, where do we write that cap down? Do we, is it parenthetically with, with the article and the warrant?
Something that we talked about with the budget committee as well is that this, you know, it's not really a hard, you know, kind of written definitive cap. It's a, you know, it's our, it's our goal and it's our, uh, what is the word, what is the word I'm looking for?
It's just to help guide us?
Yeah, a guide and an intention and, you know, not really a, kind of a set in stone kind of thing. Because, and I think the reason why, I can't, I think someone from the budget committee recommended that because, you know, because, you know, things change and expenses change and, you know, economy changes. You know, setting something and putting it, kind of attaching it to the warrant, you know, may be problematic down the road. You know, something, if we set a cap at, you know, you know, just say we set a cap for technology at two hundred thousand. Well, down the road, two hundred thousand won't buy us as much as, as it does today. So putting that hard cap for down the road may not be...
Considering that we adopt warrant articles on a yearly basis, and we approve the wording of the warrant articles on a yearly basis. That would seem to be the time if we wanted to, you know, I think we could put the caps in there so that the public is aware of when they're voting. Because then those caps can change on a yearly basis. All of a sudden, something comes, you know, in ten years, two hundred thousand doesn't buy us as much anymore. Well, then we change the wording of the warrant article and, you know, maybe we need, maybe we'll need to increase it. I, I mean, I...
That seems a little bit problematic, though, if someone were to vote on the warrant article, given that, that value would not, that total wouldn't exceed some number. Now we've got a weird sort of encumbrance, maybe that's not quite the word for it. But, you know, a limitation on the money of that year, if there's a surplus enough to fund it? Am I making any sense?
Not sure, we...
No.
I think what you're trying to say...
It requires a two-step process.
Yeah.
If there's enough money, if there is a fund balance and it's appropriated proportionally here. If one of these funds, if it's approved, and one of the funds has hit its cap. Well, the money could be appropriated, but the cap is there, so therefore that, the money wouldn't be able to go into that account. So step one is, is there a fund balance and is it approved for appropriation? If the fund bal, if the cap has been hit, then that money can't be appropriated and it's, has, needs to be returned. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I feel like we would be making it a lot more complicated for ourselves. I mean, we were given the... I don't know how to say it, what I, we're supposed to be able to make decisions based on the best interest of the town and the education. And we're, we're involving the people and letting them know that we have these reserve accounts. But to then make it more encumbrance for us to have to move the money and tell everyone and explain everything that we're doing every second. I don't know if it needs to be that much work. It seems to be working the way that it's working.
Well, we should do that anyway. We should always explain where we're moving the money to.
Right, and we are in the vote. I just don't know if we need to make it more difficult for ourselves by adding that extra step in.
I'm guessing, I guess I'm not sure how it really makes it that much more difficult. It's a simple subtraction, unless there's something in the, you know, in the accounting that, you know, I don't get it. It seems like a simple subtraction problem. If a fund's capped at two hundred thousand dollars and...
You don't have to put that in the warrant article. You can just make a motion tonight, for instance, let's take Article Five. And you can say that we're going to cap that Article Five at two hundred thousand dollars. You don't have to put that in the warrant article, it's in the minutes of your meeting. And you know that you can, you know, put that money in there, and when it hits two hundred, whatever is left, that doesn't go into that one, and it's returned to the taxpayer.
And then you can avoid the problem of not funding it and turning that back by just not putting that warrant article. Once you've reached that cap, then you pull that off your warrant and you're not funding that anymore, because it's at your max.
You wouldn't even have a warrant article.
Right, exactly. It wouldn't be one of your warrant articles.
All right, so do you want to talk about each one and, and where, what we...
If we're ready on that one, and if so, what that amount would be?
Doesn't mean we have to cap them all.
Right, exactly.
But I think it would give the public an idea of what is a reasonable amount of money to have for special ed catastrophic need, for example, or...
Boila.
Right. Okay, so shall we start with Article Four? Which is to see if the school district will vote to appropriate two-fifths, which is forty percent of the fund balance. I'll paraphrase here a bit, for the, to, for, to be added to the expansion of school facilities capital reserve fund. So how much is, is too much in that account?
Yeah, and, and I think that when we last spoke about this, we, we felt that we, it really doesn't make any sense to put a cap on this particular one. Because we know that if and when we ever build a facility, it, we're going to have to pay, you know...
Significantly more than what we would be here.
Seventy percent of the total, you know, we'll get thirty percent from, from the state, and that's a moving target, so, you know, that we're nowhere near. So it doesn't make sense to put a cap on that one.
This is the one that's most likely, if and when something's done, to stop being on the warrant article anyway. It would no longer, it would cease to be a warrant if we don't anticipate, you know, building a facility or acquiring property in any given five to seven years in the future. It disappears. You don't, it's not there anymore.
Yeah, maybe.
And that would need to be assessed at that point in time, whether at that point, you know, there was a need...
I mean, again, we assess these every year.
Right.
We assess these every year and make decisions whether warrant articles go on or off. I, I'm okay with not capping that particular one because it's a, it's a very specific, it can sunset most easily. If something, if, if and when we build something, for whatever reason, it could cease to exist.
Okay.
This article doesn't specify whether it could be used at elementary or a high school or anything, just school?
Right.
Just a general.
Just an expansion of school facilities.
So if we do something with the secondary school in two years, well, knowing we may need to do something else with the elementary school, it may not go away. But if we accomplish the elementary school needs as well, at that point, there's probably no foreseeable facilities expansion. It would be time to take this one off the warrant.
Okay, Jill, do you have...
We'll keep it going for, for the next, for, you know, seventy years, seventy-five years down the road.
Okay, so I'm not hearing any, any motions to set a cap on that one. Article Five is twenty percent of the surplus to go for the purpose of educating, educationally disabled children. Now, this would be the scenario where I, I see that we would use this if there were someone to move into the community or a situation change for an individual in the community where we can't meet their needs within our budget in that year. So essentially, we would draw from this account to get us through the end of that budget year, and then we would have to layer in for the next budget cycle, the anticipated need for educating all of the...
Exactly right.
That's right. And it could span two years, too. I mean, it could happen in March.
That's right.
And you need it till the end of March, and then you need it the next year, so depending on when it happens, you could end up needing that for more than one year.
Can you remind us again what's in this account?
I didn't bring it with me, but I wanna, I think, I wanna say a hundred and twenty. I wanna say a hundred and twenty.
That sounds about right.
I think it's a hundred and twenty.
Have you used any money on this account?
And I, I noticed, you know, the wording is, it's a capital reserve fund. Dude, can we?
You are the agents.
It's not an expendable trust.
You are the agents.
We are the agents.
You are the agents.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't say expendable trust.
Yeah, but you have to, the, the facilities one, expansion for the capital reserve fund. You must get the vote of the community to expend it, but this special ed one is not, yes, yes.
Because it says...
Did you notice the difference in the RSA? This is thirty-five, one B.
Okay, okay.
And that's very specific about setting up this kind of account.
Okay.
And I had that, those have been checked by the district attorney, the school district's attorney.
Okay.
Okay, do we...
Let's get confusing.
A, I know that a single out-of-district placement for a student is, is very expensive.
Depends on the placement.
Yeah, potentially, it can be...
No, the placement at Crotchet Mountain or something like that, a residential placement, you know, you're talking a hundred thousand dollars.
I think we had been, over the past couple of years, had been kind of talking about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar mark is where we thought we needed to be.
Two-fifty was rolling around in my head because there are some two-hundred-and-fifty thou, especially if you've gotta go the remainder of fiscal year post-budget adoption and get yourself through another full fiscal year until your next budget kicks in. You know, if you, and I would, you know, you can, you can find hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-thousand-dollar placements out there. God forbid we ever need one, but they're there.
No cap on this, you want a cap at a two-fifty?
Now, I'm thinking, yeah.
Two-fifty?
Cap at a two-fifty. Because we can always change, and if we have, something happens, we can always come back another year and change it.
It shouldn't hit two-fifty.
Yeah. That would give us two, three years to...
Gives us at least that eighteen-month window, I think, on a, you know, on a hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar placement, where we've got the money to do that.
Okay, do I hear a motion then to, to cap the total funds in this account at two-hundred-and-fifty thousand?
I'll make a motion. The fact is that Article Five, which would involve the educating, uh, the disabled children article, to be capped at 250K.
I'll second that.
Can I just clarify something? I'm just wondering, because this account will earn interest, so just cap the amount that's-
We'll take the interest.
Right, so we'll just cap the amount that's put into that account and allow it to accumulate interest, okay.
Can it accumulate up to that amount?
We should add that as part of the, um, motion.
Okay. So, the motion as amended, the, the account can't exceed that, that-
Be exempt from that cap.
Interest accrual will be exempt from that cap.
Okay, good.
So, Annette can get that into the minutes.
Okay. Any further comments on that one? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, number six. This is the same amount, 20% for the, um, expendable trust fund. So, similarly, can be worthy agents of that as well, correct? For the purpose of repairs and maintenance of the school facilities. Anyone know how much we have in that currently?
Well, it's something like 80.
If everything that we-
I was gonna say 86.
That we approved, but again, we haven't finished up with this year, so it's somewhere between that, depending on how much actually the cost was for the things we approved out of last year, so somewhere around 80, 86, I think, comes to mind.
Any thoughts on, um, where the ceiling of that should be?
Does this, does this include something like a problem with the boiler?
Mm-hmm.
Roof, roof, boiler, those are your big tickets.
Could we use that for the, part of the gym roof, we, we're gonna talk about?
Yeah, we do.
Could that be used?
I feel a little-
Excuse me. Are we gonna talk about the, the budget a little bit hereafter?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, what, what-
We're gonna go over the warrant articles?
Okay.
Yep. Oh, excuse me. I just was gonna say that I, I feel a little hesitant about putting a cap on this one. And as we discuss it, and, you know, I certainly will, um, take into account everyone's opinion, but it, just because of the issues with the facility being so old and having heard the presentation and knowing that the roof needs repairs and a lot of, it just, it makes me a little bit nervous about-
I agree.
Putting a cap on this one.
Yeah, at, at this point, you know, until, I suppose, until we ha- have better resolution on our long-term strategy for the facilities, maybe this is a good one to keep open-ended until, uh, yeah.
I tend to disagree simply from the fact that we have a CIP process and plan based on our current facilities and our current needs. And so, we've, we've planned and budgeted for the, you know, the replacement of the big-ticket items on a regular basis. And this, again, is for that unanticipated, don't have it in the current budget need, that, uh, you know, I, I, I just, I don't want to see these become, seen as bottomless pits.
Sue, we haven't used any of this money on this article?
Yes.
We have?
We used this money the last two years. We paid for stuff out of it.
Bathrooms.
The lockers.
Bathrooms and-
Lockers.
You know, i- and it, but if you look at our capital improvement plan-
There's definitely a place for the boilers. Do we have like a total for-
On, on the bottom, you know, if you go like at the elementary school?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a total there. Are you talking about?
Total for both. No.
No.
You know, because, you know, so say we're budgeting, like, 50,000 a year. I don't know what our real numbers are, you know, per, per, um, school, per facility. And we do have some, a catastrophic event. You know, that 50,000 in the capital improvement, um, that we, that we did include, that we did include in the budget may not cover a, some big-ticket item that may, do you know what I'm, do you know what I'm getting at?
Like a boiler boiler, isn't it?
Even though, even though we have, we have the capital improvement plan, and we are allotting certain monies every year, if we have an unforeseen, you know, emergency, what we've budgeted may not, um, cover that.
Well, in some ways, you know, you are trying to plan through your capital improvement plan what your needs are going to be. Roof, boilers, parking lots, uh, because you know you need, you have repairs to those. So, this should reflect that. The issue is, is that you've been using your reserve fund to actually address some of these things. So, by putting on a cap, wouldn't that limit your ability to do that?
No, because the cap does not keep you from doing, does not limit us from doing what we've been doing philosophically. It just puts a li- an upper limit on the amount of funds available. It doesn't, you know, we have chosen as a board to expend some of these trust fund monies to pay for capital, you know, capital improvements and repair and maintenance. And you gotta remember, that's repair and maintenance. It's not necessarily this, you know, we need a new something or other. We don't do it for new equipment. We don't do it for, you know, we wouldn't do it for portable classrooms. We wouldn't do it for things like that. We've been using it for repair and maintenance specifically. I mean, I don't think it would change our philo- philosophy of how we've approached that account.
I agree with you, you know, in terms of CIP. But in terms of what Sue told us last meeting, that so many roofs were, were, were bad, Sue? The fact is that, like, there were four, five, six you're talking about?
Well, and they're in, they're in your budget. They're in your budget, um, for this year, and we have a plan to-
To get one.
Address them. I think we're down to one at this point, replacing the one.
But we did talk about using-
Surplus funds at the end of the year to get the three that were in the plan.
Okay.
So, that's still doable.
And the surplus funds would come from this article?
No.
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 This year's budget.
This year's budget.
Which would reduce the amount of money available to go into these articles, potentially.
Potentially.
I mean, it's sort of a, you know, you're taking it from the same place, whether you're taking it before or after the distribution.
Yeah, you know, Forrest, I, I, I think you're right. I don't think that it would hurt to have a cap on this, because, um, you know, our philosophy has, has been to, um, try to, to pick away at some things with this fund. So, um, so it's a, it's kind of a fluid, it's been a fluid account, anyway. So, it really probably won't hurt us at all to have that, that cap, because we aren't really, we're not, we're not, uh, nesting it away. We're, it's fluid.
In all honesty, are we likely ever to get the, is this count ever gonna reach its cap?
Right.
No, because we've been utilizing the funds, I think, but I, so I think philosophically, the cap is a good thing.
Well, it's, I mean, if the cap is, is, um, above a, you know, a certain threshold, it, it really has only philosophical meaning, because we can only put in $50,000 per year. So, if we set the cap at $200,000, it really, you know, we're gonna revisit it again before we have the opportunity to, um, to, to reach it. So, at that level, you know, it is purely a philosophical thing, but it does give the voters an idea of what the intent is.
So, what do you think, um, do you think that 250 is a good mark for this one as well?
That's the amount that was rolling around in my head. That gives you a couple of major roofs and-
Yeah. A couple of boilers or-
You know, patching up a major system, do, do a boiler. You can, you know, you can combine any numbers of things if you ever reached, if you're at the cap for that amount of money.
Yeah.
If we're gonna keep using it.
And there's no logic behind those, choice of those numbers, other than just what sounds good, honestly.
I agree.
Okay.
Anyone have a motion on that, then?
Make a motion that we, uh, cap the, uh, amount of money allowed in the expendable trust fund for repairs and maintenance at $250,000. Again, subject to the same restrictions in the first, in Chet's motion, that it's not subject to the, you know, interest isn't subject to that.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, number seven. Similarly, 20% with a yearly cap of $50,000. This is the technology equipment one. This is to, includes the, uh, for the purpose of purchasing technology equipment. Equipment includes replacing computers at the junior, senior high school and at the elementary school. Printers, additional equipment, software for classroom use.
Seems to me we don't have too much in this one.
No, we don't.
13,000?
Yeah.
Yeah.
At 13,000?
Again, this is a very fluid, um, account. We, we've been using these funds to, you know, to make these purchases, these, um, equipment purchases throughout the year. So, you know, maybe this one, y- you know, we've only got 13 in it now, maybe this one is a 100,000, you know, cap, I don't know.
That's kind of what I was thinking. It, I mean, you lose a server, you've got a, a problem, but it's not a boiler.
Right.
You can do a lot with, if we're in a situation where we have a, a, a need to tap $100,000 for the technology, it'd be interesting to see what that world looks like, as far as what's out there that we'd want to buy, or we've got a pretty catastrophic situation on our hands. I think $100,000 is not a bad number. Cut your nodding. Jill, do you have any thoughts on it?
No, you're coming from a tech, technical background, too, so you work with computers quite a bit, so-
As well as you do, so, or have a lot of experience there, so-
No, I just work with kids. No, I do. Um, yeah, I think, I think that's fine. I just, um, I think, I don't know the price of what a server would cost, but I just would want to make sure that if we're making all this progress with the teachers, to have a server go down, that there would be money to quickly rectify that, or you're gonna lose all the progress that you've made.
Right.
You are absolutely right.
You buy a nice server for $10,000.
Right, so I don't think we're-
Yeah.
The average, the average around 6,000 to 7,000 that James is able to get.
Right, a $10,000 server bought by James is, um, is a whole lot less expensive than that.
And he uses-
He's a, he's a shopper.
Yes, he is.
I'm gonna thank him for that.
Yes, he is.
So, I think that covers them.
So, I didn't hear any more. Should we have formally done that yet, though?
I'll make a motion to set a cap of $100,000 to the, uh, technology, uh, fund. How's that? Uh, not to, with the exclusion of interest. Or however that was worded before. Right, accrued interest.
And I'll second that motion.
That's a well-put-together motion.
You got that, Annette?
It's nine o'clock.
Um, okay, last words on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? I love the time in the meeting. I lost my copy of the agenda.
We have to go over the-
The rest of, so we've kind of discussed, um, part of the warrant.
Yep.
So, um-
Can I ask a question? Just to refresh my memory, with the numbers that are in the warrant articles, we're saying that if there is a surplus of some, of $250,000, that would be the most that we would put into these accounts, and everything else would go back to the taxpayers.
Correct. Okay, shall we take these in order? This is, Article One is to see if the school district will raise a sum of, fill in the blank, for the purpose of purchasing land and authorize withdrawal of funds from capital reserves, um, and open space. And so, this is, uh, to, essentially to use the money that we already have and to, um, borrow the rest as necessary to, um, purchase land. We don't, we're not in a place at this point yet to make an announcement.
Not yet.
But we're hoping that we can, we can fill in those blanks. Is there anything further we need to discuss regarding that at this point? Okay, um, Article Two is to see if the district will raise and appropriate the sum of, uh, to be determined, um, for the purpose of installing an elevator at the junior, senior high school.
In your packet attached to the warrant articles, behind it is a memo from, uh, DMB Son, who was, um, who did the drawings and, um, gave us the information regarding an elevator for our junior, senior high school. And he has two, um, elevators that he's proposing or recommending to us. One is, uh, limited use, which would be specifically for the purpose of, um, handicap accessibility. And the second is, uh, which the cost would be 225,500. The second elevator would be a, a more standard one that would, um, would be used not only for the purpose of access for our students, but could also be used, um, to move equipment, um, materials, machines from one floor to the other, and a cost of 315,000. You know, we've been, uh, dealing with this ADA, um, regulation. We continue to be, um, stressed, uh, to the limit over that chairlift. It, um, it, it's, it's not serving the purpose, so, um, it's, it's sort of in your, your court now to decide what you think should go in there for an elevator.
What is, um, what is the chair? Is it a ch- an actual chair? Not a, not something that you can fold out, like a platform that you could put things on?
Well, it actually has a platform that you roll a wheelchair right on to, and then it, it's like a, a chair. When we say that a chairlift, I mean, it actually has a, you put a wheelchair on this lift, and it goes up the stairs.
I'm just picturing my grandmother's chair where you-
Yeah, no, not, not quite, um, but it's, um-
I thought it did have a chair. It doesn't have a chair with it, but it's-
And do they use that for the Janet, the, the custodians? Have to use that to move, how do they get their equipment where they need to now?
Well, we don't encourage that, because it's, it's so fragile.
They have machines upstairs that stay upstairs, so they don't go floor to floor. They go up once and they stay there.
The difficulty here is the expenditure relative to your long-term goals around facility. And I think that's really around where that decision is made. Once you make the decision, I'll plug the numbers in and I'll clean up the language on this proposal. But I thought tonight, we have all the detail, by the way, of-
I have all of the drawings.
The drawings, the plans, um, they would use the well right where the current chairlift is. They would use that stairwell, if you will, to put it in.
Would that make the, I mean, currently, when that chair is, is in use, it, I mean, it's already a pretty heavily-traveled stairwell, and, um, it's, it's limited in size because of the, of the chair, uh, of being there. Any, would there be any improvement in, in that sort of crowding piece?
No, I mean, you, you're already limited in terms of space, and, um, they would, um, be able to, uh, build out a little bit, because that is a window there, so they could open up that stairwell. Um, Dean has the drawings.
Yeah, and as I recall, I think it's gonna require taking part of one of those rooms upstairs, too. Isn't that one of the little problems we might have?
But that's structurally doable?
It is structurally doable. Um, let's try to think what's in this. There's a picture here.
So, it won't replace the stairs? The stairs will still be there? It'll just be next to them?
Yeah, here's, I hear it's right here.
And remind us again, we currently do not have any students in the junior, senior high school, um, that require, uh, we, in, in wheelchairs at this point.
That's correct, but we do have people with crutches, and, you know, we're dealing with that constantly.
Right.
At the elementary school, we have youngsters that are in the, um, pr- um, primary grades that are in wheelchairs.
So, so, um, you know, so, you know, this is gonna- So, so, you know, so, this is going to be very pressing.
You are in violation of ADA.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's no doubt about it. Any day that that chair doesn't work and we have to wait for a repairman to come, you're violating ADA.
And the reality, reality is, even if we, you know, if we do end up building a new high school, if that's going to remain a junior high school, we still, you know, we still need to address this issue, so. You just need to put it on the warrant.
The, the system we have now, the chair we have now is, is inoperable.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, like I said, it's, it, we can get it going. It's just, it's very old, it's, it's run its course.
Got to be replaced.
Right. And it's a very difficult unit to use. From, from the standpoint, I want you to put yourself in the shoes of an adolescent. And being showcased as they go up in an open platform, going up the stairwell with the, in front of the peers, it's, it's, it's very difficult for them. And many choose not to use it at all, which is another problem for the staff to deal with.
But if you had that in the elementary school, which you obviously don't, that would probably be, you'd be the coolest kid in the school.
Right, exactly, but, you know, we're now talking about adolescents, you know, junior, senior high school students who are, don't think that's cool anymore.
So the question is, the limited use or the standard?
Well, we have dedicated equipment on the second floor now, so there's not a whole lot of. I mean, certainly, reams of paper need to go up and down the stairs. Things like this, it's. Still a lot of money for just moving the equipment.
So we're trying to decide if you want to spend the ex, recommend the extra eighty thousand dollars for the, for the second.
The ability to haul freight. Doesn't seem like. Not knowing, I mean, we need to be ADA compliant. I think that needs to, to drive.
This is Caswell, and I talked about this a long time, and the goal is, is around students, and that's our number one priority. That's our greatest need at that school. We've been putting it off, and we recommended to you that you would go with the limited use, limited application elevator for the purpose of accessibility for students. I don't know if that helps.
I'm, philosophically, I'm not willing to spend an additional eighty thousand dollars on, on the building, not knowing where we're going to begin with, and eighty thousand dollars, eighty thousand dollars, we need to take care of the kids. If I got to carry a box of paper upstairs, so be it. I mean, the high school I went to was four stories, and it had a elevator that my friend in a wheelchair could just get into, close the door. That's what it was there for.
Chat, what are your thoughts on this one?
I, I kind of agree.
Jill, you're same page.
I think it's important that we put this out there, because I honestly believe that for the next, if we don't do something for the next five to seven to 10 years, we're going to have an item like this on the warrant. We're going to have something in our budget to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars every year to continue to deal with these issues in that building. So it's, you know, it's the reality of what the building is, but we still have to be as frugal as, as reasonable, I suppose.
Okay.
You know, we've had this to you. We had this last year, year before, remember, we talked about it, so there's some more information on it. It's very small. Forrest, you're absolutely right. It's about student accessibility, not custodial maintenance.
Is this the installation cost also?
Everything.
Everything.
So we have consensus on that one? We, when we have all the numbers in, we'll, we'll more formally.
Right, and I think you would vote to move it forward to, for budget committee review and for the public hearing, but a final vote should not be taken until after the public hearing, when you've had an opportunity to hear from the community around these issues. Then I would, you know, strongly urge you to take a formal vote.
Yeah.
Okay. Article three is to see if the district will raise, authorize, sorry, the, to enter into long-term lease purchase agreement for, it looks like two hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred dollars for the purchase or lease of six portable classrooms, which is three structures. And. There's several numbers in here. I guess we have a few options regarding the terms that we would finance that with.
Yeah, it's, I know, in the article, it's just very confusing, but unfortunately, that's the way it needs to be written. But of course, the first year, when you go into the lease agreement, you have to pay for the setup cost. And I think, do you have the sheet from Skjavi that just talks about what it would be to set up a building? And then you also need to put furniture in them. So that's why the first year is quite expensive. And then you have the option of leasing them for 24 months, 36 months, 48 months. We went with the middle of the road. Or you can buy them outright. So we used the 36-month figure and added the furniture and the setup.
And those furnishings, they would be ours?
Correct, yes, they would be.
In the end.
Do you have that? I had a quote from a vendor.
You have a quote, it's on the third page, it's called criteria?
Yeah, I just asked.
I think I put it in your packet. That's for three classrooms.
So we just doubled that.
We just, you'd have to double it to twenty thousand.
See that?
Right after, next page, after.
It's actually the last page in my.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so this is for three classrooms?
He set up a classroom for 25.
Okay, thoughts on this one? We have a. We've experienced growth over the years that although we're not growing leaps and bounds now, we don't fit in our current space. And I think this, this speaks to that, to offer the program that. That we have, we clearly don't fit in the current room.
One thing, do we want to think about separating the elementary from the? High, or, well, I'm sorry. This is just for the high school.
Right.
Okay, because I just noticed on this.
Well, they gave us two quotes.
Remember, we talked about replacing the two at the elementary, so they just.
The warrant article is just for buildings at the junior, senior high school, correct?
Okay, okay.
Right, correct.
That's what I, that's what I thought. I was going to ask the same question, Lynda.
And maybe.
Put that wording in there?
Does it say that?
Should we put the wording in there?
I think it is, actually. No, it is, it is in there.
Is it?
Isn't it?
I don't think so.
Oh, I'm sorry, hold on.
No, but I should put it in.
Yeah.
Just because the warrant articles, because of the numbers and then writing the numbers out and the, the way that it's written, it's very confusing when you're saying they're trying to read all of this and vote.
I know that, and I, I try really hard to be as simple as I can, but there are specific requirements about the way things are done, and I, I, I wished I had, could write them more simply, but you can't.
Right down to the order of the articles.
I do think that.
Six portable classrooms.
I should get in six portable classrooms for, at the junior, senior high school. All right, I will do that.
Yeah, I think that would help.
Yes, yes.
Are we not looking at the elementary school this year?
Well, he's coming up with a, what I guess, see about the land, they're going to do a whole thing, I guess.
Oh, that's right.
And so, hopefully, we can have a comprehensive fix to that portable classroom problem built into that, that plan. So any thoughts on, on how we approach this? Do we, do we want to do the, use the numbers for 36 months?
You know, should, should we need it longer, we can do that. I mean, it's not like they're going to be there 36 months and then they take them away, so, yeah, no, I mean, this is, this will, this will guarantee that price for those three years. You know, the three, the, the cost for three years is two hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred dollars, which is equates to thirty-nine seventy-five a month. And in the first year, we have to appropriate extra, as Sue said, because of setup.
So that first year, I'm sorry, I just was looking at my notes, should be a hundred and sixty, not forty-seven, seven. See that, forty-seven, seven?
Yeah.
It should be a hundred and sixty. Because the forty, I'm just looking at my notes when I calculated all of this. Year one would be the forty-seven, seven, plus the 20, plus the ninety-three. The ninety-three for three setups, forty-seven, seven for the payment, and then the 20 for the furniture. So that first year should be the 160.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't catch that when you gave that.
One sixty K?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll, I'll correct that when I do them. You're, you're going to look at these one more time. I know that gets a little.
I know, I looked at them too, and I apologize.
But I'll bring these back to you for your January third board meeting, which is before the budget committee meeting. So you'll have one more time to look at these and make sure everything is accurate.
Are we certain that, since we anticipate that these portables at the high school will go on the asphalt slab, that we do not have to do concrete footing? Should we do this? We're all set with that sort of permanent installation, installation feature because of the asphalt?
It's, I believe, look at that, do you have that Skjavi quote?
Says, set up on existing asphalt surface.
The only piece that I know when we talked with Dan Vincent is they need to be secured to that asphalt, so I'm not sure. Do you mean poor footings? I think, I think it's included in that, because we did talk with him, and I believe he's talked with Skjavi about how, what we would need to do. Yeah, but I can check on that to be sure.
Just want to double check that.
I can check on that.
We want to double check that because we don't want to get stuck like Summersworth did at the beginning either, when they set up their, their portables and had to, had to make them permanent and didn't know it. And so it delayed their occupancy for, what, Chat, couple of months almost, didn't it?
Yeah.
Hypothetical question, if we don't need them after two years and we have a three-year lease agreement, what, what happens then?
Boy, I'm not sure. Good question.
I'm assuming there'd be probably some sort of penalty and.
Probably, but think about the question. I don't know if that could actually happen.
Yeah.
If anything, we might eat them in the.
I'm just kind of trying to, you know.
It's not.
Settle in my mind on the term.
Three years was the, you know.
Yeah.
And I can't anticipate us needing them less than three years.
Right.
I mean, if, if we build a new building, we're a year, we're at least, we're a year and three months out from voter approval if it happens then.
Right.
And then you're, then you're two months, you're two years almost in the start to finish bit, and so you're, there's your three years. So I, I think that three years is reasonable.
I agree.
I can check that, though.
That's a best-case scenario. We're more likely to have to extend it than we are to cut it short.
Right.
Okay. Any last thoughts on?
Well, we'll, we'll come back with a, clean that up a little bit.
Okay. And then we jump, don't we?
Oh, and default. I do have the default, but you and I, we didn't talk about it.
And the last one is Article eight, the budget.
And I apologize, I have the default, I've worked on it, but Kathleen and I haven't really sat down and talked about. We've been kind of busy this week, so I, I don't want to really give you that number yet, but certainly by the next meeting, I'll have that for you.
All right.
But the budget number of thirteen million, fourteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars is, after all the budget deliberations in your work, is the new budget total for, proposed budget total, which represents a 2.93% increase. Lynda, you might want to.
Yeah, if you have, do, you should have all received this sheet tonight. What we did was have Sue kind of put a spreadsheet together for the budget committee and for us, to show us kind of the starting point of the budgeting process. That thirteen million, two hundred and seventy thousand is what the building administrators requested. And then after the superintendent and Sue went through the budget, they brought that down to the thirteen, two oh seven. And then after, you know, after our deliberations and meetings, we went to thirteen oh six four, and then Kathy and Sue went through again after meeting with the budget committee as well, and brought it down to that thirteen oh one four, which is where we are now.
Can you refresh my memory about the part-time special ed reduction up there?
Oh, you wouldn't have seen that, right. That was before it got to you. There was a request for, I believe it was a kindergarten, a halftime kindergarten teacher. Do you recall?
Was an additional position in kindergarten for services, and we reviewed the caseloads and felt that, that, you know, that we would not need that this year. We do anticipate, as you know, an influx of numbers of students needing some assistance coming out of preschool, but we think we'll be okay for another year.
I wanted to point out, at the, under additional reductions, we did take out that 29-5 for the gym floor slash roof section, and discussed the roof section coming out of the repairs and maintenance fund. So, so that's what we're, what the plan is at this point.
So that's going to be done, that's.
Yep.
Yep.
And the gym floor, you think we can?
Gym floor, we, we decided that this year we were going to just do what we've been doing in terms of the maintenance, and that is, you know, re-refishing or whatever.
Just the basic refinish that we normally do, not take it right down.
How does it look? I haven't seen it in a year.
I think Forrest, you were the one, or someone said that.
Yeah, I was, I think at the last meeting, maybe I, I noted that while watching one of my son's practices, a fellow sat down next to me and another dad and said, wow, this floor looks, this gym looks great, you know, and, you know, I was just laughing to myself about it because we'd just been discussing taking it down to bare wood and repainting the lines and refinishing it. And, you know, from my perception, it, it looks like, you know what, it's, maybe it's yellowed a little bit, but it's, it looks pretty sound.
Give it another year.
Yeah, I don't think we're jeopardizing the, the floor, you know, the fundamentals of the floor by, by putting it off just another year.
And again, that is something we could discuss toward, more toward the end of the year, when we do have more definitive, a definitive answer to what our surplus is going to be. You know, maybe we can, that's something we could think about at that point as well. Maybe, you know, we have the money, we could do it.
Okay, anything else on, on the budget that we ought to discuss at this point? I mean, it's under three percent, given the fact that there's a lot of built-in things that, from prior votes, such as the teacher's contract.
Exactly.
Which hits, hits the budget on the, on the default budget side of just over four percent?
Yeah.
Annualized?
Yeah, and, yeah, it's, and it's. Yeah. And, yeah, it's, and it's kinda a good reminder to, um, that the, um, payroll expenses is about seventy-six percent of our total budget. And this year, um, contractually, the, the, or actually, for next year, the, um, contractually, um, the increase in sal, in, in payroll is four percent. Um, so for us to come in at a two-point-nine-three percent, when seventy-six percent of our budget is reflected in that, you know, that four percent increase, you know, that means that we, you know, really have, um, worked hard to maintain the rest of the budget, so...
It's one sharp pencil. Thank you for...
Chris, Claire?
Yes, Chet.
On these, um, repairs, for example, um, where you got building repairs, twenty-six thousand reduced. What is that on, Kathy? Or, or...
Do you want me to go ahead? Um, again, those are, um, when we were working on the budget during our budget sessions, we did, we decided that we were gonna take that twenty-six thousand out of the, the budget and then use, um, use, use capital reserve, um, or the impact fees or, you know, at the end of the year, we'll see where, what our surplus is. Either use the surplus, the impact fees, or those capital reserve funds.
Didn't we vote to do two amounts of twenty-five thousand?
Yeah. It's in the forty-four. See the forty-four?
The roof sections?
See that forty-four? You had two items in there, and it added, and I added them together. You took twenty-five out and then you took out...
There's the other one.
Yeah, there was twenty-five in there, but there was also something else in there that we took out, um... No, I'm trying to think. I'm trying to picture that on the page.
There was a whole little list of things.
Yeah, and it came up, and I added it all up.
All the, um...
Counter top.
Counter top. Yeah, there were other things in there, and it added up to the forty-four.
But why is it called roof sections?
Roof sections isn't an accurate title then?
I'm trying to think.
I don't think that included a roof section.
It, it did, because you, I think you just decided to take out twenty-five at both, or twenty-six at both. And then I had to figure out what it was. And then I, there are other things in that roof sections, and I can't, I can't recall. One of them was the counter. There were some other things that were itemized when you gave me your copy of it. And I, I just picked up the roof on that.
So roof sections and...
And other, yes.
But you're going to do the counter through surplus?
Or your reserve fund.
Or impact fees or the reserve funds.
You saying what the roof should talk about?
Right.
We're not gonna fail to do anything. We've just identified current monies for them as opposed to future monies.
Right.
And this idea of repairing furniture, how, is this something we go another year or? It bothers me to see that cut out if we're...
Oh, it's replacement. I'm sorry. Repairing. No, it's replacement. It's just my abbreviations. I could, I could've fit it after I made the cell bigger, but...
It's not repair, it's replacement.
It's replacement.
And that...
What was it, a thousand dollars?
Which one?
No, four, four thousand?
Yeah, four thousand.
Um, I know that there was something in the guidance.
That's the lockers. Is it? That might be the lockers. That might be the lockers, and then guidance is the, um...
Thousand.
Thousand.
We are gonna do some locker work, aren't we? Thought we had decided to do some.
Again, at the end of the year, we'll see where we are with impact fees, with surplus, et cetera.
Anything that's building, maintenance, and repair, we're gonna come back and look at again.
Yeah.
Anything in that list that's building, maintenance, repair.
Anything else?
All right, I'll bring that warrant back to you. Cleaned up one more time, ready for January third again for another review. How's that? Okay, wait.
One last, a very small item. Article ten, which is other business, should be Article nine. We only have nine this year.
Oh, you know why? We had an Article one and we changed the numbers. Okay, thanks. Thanks. I missed it.
How many times I looked at this, Lynda, same here?
It's those things that...
I know, thank you.
You don't see because you're looking at the detail.
Annette and I go through this. I, we, we actually bet how many times we're gonna redo these.
Soon as you start printing it, you find the, the last one.
That's right. That's, oh, that's so right.
Okay, CIP, Capital Improvement Plan Review. We've already been thumbing at it a little bit.
I just wanted to give you another piece of it. I, last year when we talked about capital improvements, I had just gone through and done some cover sheets and done some definitions. I don't think we ever really talked about it. You know, getting back to the whole idea of capital improvements, I think we've always had a plan. We haven't had a formal committee. We haven't gone through a process, but we just kind of had our spreadsheet and put things out there that we thought we would need to address in the future. There was some question about what is capital and what's not. I divided it up. Building obviously is, is capital, but we also wanted to track things like our programs, so that's why you'll see the programs at the top of it. I think there was some question from the budget committee is, why would you put those in there? Well, I think for our purposes, we wanna keep track of those kinda things. And knowing that a reading po, program can cost, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, you need to think about that and plan for that. So that's why we put those in there. As you can see, we, I've left in too, on the plan that you have, I've left in our prior years. I know it's supposed to only be your capital plan from next year on, but I've just kinda given you the history of what we've actually done over the years. I did notice on, and what I do is I'll revise this because this is really a draft. It's contingent upon what passes in your budget. Um, I noticed on one area, I had that parking lot expansion in there at the elementary, so I need to move that. And then obvious, right, and then obviously your change on the elevator, I'll change that amount that we decided on this evening. But again, anything that you see that we need to add, the boilers, um, there's a line item there for it. We were going to get some quotes on that. And then after hearing what Bob had to say, I don't know, you know, we might wanna change that amount. And any suggestions you have on how we might wanna change the presentation of this report? Early on, when the town started with their committee, I had gone down and asked about their committee and being part of that committee, but at that time, they felt that was just a town committee. So we just kinda did our plan, and we were asked for our information, and it was incorporated in the town's plan. And just recently, we received a letter from Diane Hardy asking us for our plan, and we sent that to her, and she has a copy of our plan. She has this information, so...
Uh, we definitely wanna get a copy of this to the budget committee. They've been...
And I do have that all punched and ready to go in there, binders. It just didn't get in there binder, cause I don't think we really had a definite... I mean, I'll have to make some revisions again before I do that, but that is, that is a tab in your budget, and that's part of our budget process. It's just they don't have that information yet, so...
Sue, excuse me. Uh, with the removal of the modulators, um, on the, on the building part of the CIP, I noticed you don't have any money in there at all.
Are you looking at the elementary or the high school?
Um, that's a good question.
Up at the top, very top of the page, it'll show you.
Elementary. Your projections are two-point-five million with the building and so forth.
Um, I think, right, I think because we, last year, thought about that, and we had that out there. And the thought was that we would fix them up, which we did. We did some painting, we did some repairs to the existing modulators. And I think the decision from my take was that we wouldn't do that, we would add on to that building.
Look at the big picture that's coming down the road here.
Well, when you talked before, tonight, we actually did, remember? We did a little schematic of the elementary school adding on some classrooms, replacing those modulators, and then, of course, fixing the road system and the tran, you know, the in and out, and the play field.
And the playing fields, yeah.
All rolled into one. So that's what that represents.
And that's that two-point-five number that I moved over.
It's more the building on the right half of the slash than it is the...
I got you.
Right.
Move modulators on the left half.
Yeah, but it is part of that.
Yeah.
We should probably put it the other way around.
At this point, true.
Okay. So you're gonna make a couple changes to that and then, and forward it to the budget committee?
Yeah, I will. And if there's any suggestions you have?
Yeah, I, I think we did, we definitely, oh, I'm sorry, we, we definitely need to, um... It, it may be worth having a meeting or having, you know, Diane Hardy, or having someone come to one of our meetings to talk about this because there's a lot of conversation, for, for example, on the budget committee about, about our CIP. And, you know, should we have a committee? Should, you know, whose, whose jurisdiction is this? Who should be, you know, monitoring this, et cetera, et cetera? So, you know, I think that, um, you know, maybe the budget committee, we can invite, we can invite, you know, other people from, from the town and, and discuss this. I think that we really need to get this fleshed out, and hey, if there's a, if there's a group of people that wanna form a committee and take this task on...
Sure.
Awesome.
Sounds great to me.
So I, I really think we should pursue that.
Sue, just a suggestion for the format.
Sure.
It would, I, it would be helpful for me, for the budget committee whoever's looking at this, if the items in the previous years that have been done are colored differently or have a shadow box or something, so that you can see, you know, it's one big list. And then that helps us highlight, you know what, something didn't get done in oh-six, oh-seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
That doesn't mean it disappears. It means we can't forget about it.
Right.
I think everything got done, but, or virtually everything.
Yeah.
But that would just help it, just from visually, to be able to track.
Well, when things don't get done, do you put, do you bump their cost?
I bump them up a next year.
That's what I said. I think everything that's there is done, but it would just give somebody that visual clue that it's, it's done. It's not a, a wonder.
Sure.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion.
Okay.
So this is what was planned or what was done?
Hmm? What is done?
What was done?
What was done?
And then what is planned?
This is what is done and what's planned. Depends on where you draw the line.
Okay, next we have resignations. We have a letter from our chair. I'd like to read it. I think it's appropriate. "To do so, dated December the eleventh, dear members of the Newmarket School Board, Mr. Chase, Mr. Rand, Randstel, Mrs. Mantegani, Mr. Jablonski, and Mrs. Berry, it's with fixed, mixed feelings that I submit to you my letter of resignation as superintendent of schools in Newmarket. The last four and a half years have provided me with a wonderful opportunity to make a difference in the lives of children, work with an incredible team of administrators, and marvel at the commitment and dedication of the entire staff. I've appreciated the opportunity to work in an environment that values the importance of good education. Most importantly for me are the students that, that I see each day. The community should be proud of them for their efforts in school and how well they represent Newmarket each day. They are, they are the legacy that we all leave, and I believe the community is and will be in good hands, in very good hands. As you know, I was nominated and confirmed by the governor and executive council for the position of director of the Division of Instruction. I look forward with great anticipation for the opportunity to shape the future of education in the state of New Hampshire. As I've said to you, Newmarket will always have a voice at the state level. Thanks for your support. Sincerely, Kathleen A. Murphy." So Kathy, it's, um, it's with, with mixed feelings, um, that I, that I think we, we accept this resignation. Um, you've brought, uh, as, as you've highlighted, a great deal to, um, to our community with your efforts in, in curriculum and I, I, in many areas, I, I don't wanna even start a laundry list for, for risk of forgetting things. And we're, I'm personally very happy for you and, um, and wish you the best and know that we'll have you at the end of the other, other end of the phone to, um, to be our advocate, both Newmarket's advocate and advocate for all school districts in a similar situation as we are. I know that they were interested in you, not just because of your, your educational background, but, um, your background as a practitioner, as an, as an educator in the classroom. And, um, and that I think is, has been a, um, a mark of, of how, why you've been so successful here and, and why I know that you'll be successful there to all of our benefit, so, um, thank you.
Thank you.
And it's, it's very clear that they've been watching what you've been doing here in, in our town. We, and we all know what you've done for us and, um, and those darn people at the state, they figured it out. Figured it out and they've snatched, snatched you from us. But you know what, it's, it's wonderful for you. And, you know, I honestly think that it's going to be wonderful for us in the long term as well because you do have such an intimate knowledge of, of this, um, district and, um, what we face, and the fact that we're gonna have such a strong voice, uh, to represent us at the state level is just, is just wonderful for us, so, thank you.
Well, I hope I can bring that voice. I really feel very, very strongly about it, you know? How many times have we sat here and Chet said, "We gotta get to the state, we gotta get to the state." And so I, I guess I took your advice, but, um...
Thanks, Chet.
Yeah. But, um, it's true, you know? Look at all the wonderful things that happen in this town. I mean, you, you're able to stand tall amongst much larger districts, uh, and, um, your students, uh, perform time after time. And in, in not always having all the resources that everyone else has, but that message has to be clear. When I met with the governor, that was the first question he asked me when he interviewed me. He said to me, "Is there a difference between the have and the have-nots?" And, and the difference between the towns that have a lot of resource, and that obviously is money, and the schools? And I said, "Absolutely, Governor, there is, and we need to do something about that, and we need to do that together." And, um, I believe that, cause it can be done, because look at Newmarket.
Yes, and we still have a lot of work to do. You, you've set, I think, a tone, and you and I have fought, no questions. And, but I think you set a tone, and, um, we, I think we're gonna get it done, no question in my mind.
It always has to be. It always has to be about students.
Absolutely, it's children, yeah.
It has to be that way. It has to be focused. You have to be, it's a mission.
Yes.
And, and, and when you, when you stray from that focus, and it's not about our kids, about our little ones and our high school kids, I think you miss the opportunity.
So, thank you. Um, I guess we need to accept that nomination or resignation.
I was hoping you'd forget that.
Forrest, would you like the honors?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and do this. Uh, make a motion that with, uh, our regrets and our congratulations and our gratitude, that we accept Kathy Murphy's resignation as superintendent of the Newmarket Schools.
And I'll second that.
Any further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Soft aye.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you for the kind words tonight. Appreciate that.
We need to, uh, we need to do some planning for, for the transition period. But there's been some initial discussions with, um, the State School Boards Association and the State School Administrators Association.
I've done both of those.
And there's some initial, um, there's some ideas out there about potential interim candidates, which I think might be the direction we want to move. As much as I wanna see Kathy, uh, move to being effective at her, at her new, um, job, we need, we need to hang on to her to provide adequate transition. And I think moving straight to, um, a replacement superintendent would be, um, very hurried unless we use some sort of interim person along the way. So, there's folks out there, it sounds like, um, what, um, I guess I'm looking to the group for what we feel the process should be. Clearly, we, we need to have some, some discussions before making a commitment. Do we want to, um, talk with a few people, do some initial phone inquiries? I have not been involved personally in a superintendent search. I, I know there's folks out there that would be happy to be involved in, uh, in both the super, the... in both the super, the replacement of the, the permanent replacement as well as the interim. But I'm looking for thoughts on what, others that might have gone through similar things, what works better. Forrest, I guess I'm looking at you being.
Two processes sort of have to start simultaneously. They're not necessarily the same process. In fact, they're probably certainly not the same process. One is the, you know, if we decide we're going to go to interim solution, which that's my opinion that we need to do because the, the search for a permanent replacement's going to take us significantly more time to do it correctly. In that, if the, if the School Boards Association or NUSDAQ or whichever group has, we can put that interim job through them, solicit paper, you know, the cover letter, resume, curriculum vitae, the different things that are necessary, paper screen. Maybe for the interim selection, the board, I think, can make that determination for an interim for the remainder of this school year. And paper screen and interview several candidates and move forward. Simultaneous to that, it's time to get the ads out and start beating the bush for a permanent replacement in that process then should include a much, much wider group of stakeholders. Certainly the board, parents, staff at all those schools, representative of the different groups. Students should be involved in that process, in my opinion. Whether they form their own separate committee, which is one way to do it. I've seen that be very, 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 very powerful. Or whether they, you know, sit as part of whatever selection committee, you know, we design. Just design a very deliberate process to undertake the superintendent search. Be happy to be, be advised, I mentioned to you earlier, be involved in that any way you'd like.
Okay, well, thank you. Any other thoughts on, on the approach? It seems.
Do we have a date, Kathy, for you when you'll be leaving or?
No, I didn't set one, Chet, just because there were so many things that were up in the air, so I didn't do that at this time.
You didn't check to see whether we could get an interim through the state?
I did, I am doing that. I've called, you know, the groups that Cliff mentioned and I was supposed to hear back from them this morning, so obviously with the weather, I didn't hear back from them, but I anticipate hearing from them tomorrow. Ted Comstock from the School Boards Association and. Oh, Mark, his name.
Mark Joyce.
Mark Joyce. I don't know why. His name didn't stick with me. Mark Joyce was the Executive Director of the New Hampshire Association of School Administrators. Should know that.
So we'll probably have a couple of names so that we can get that paperwork and. I, I'm looking for, I guess, I don't have a feel for the timeline for how that interim piece can happen.
I'd say that in the, you know, we probably need to look at the first two weeks in January to get paper. You know, review that paper, set up some, some interviews and, you know, I'd say probably third to fourth week in January, we may have a. Because I'm assuming right now it's January 1st for all intensive purposes anyway. We're coming up on the Christmas holidays, so. That, you know, by the end of January, we could have an interim selection. We could work out that transition then for the remaining 30 days, whether, you know, how much Kathy's here versus Concord or however we work that out with her to support her transition, but also to provide the interim superintendent with the knowledge and support necessary to move, keep programs moving forward. And then it, the sooner the better on a superintendent search plan for the replacement. It's January 1st. The pool's already, the pool's already dropping in level because, you know, districts start these searches as early as they can. So perhaps a subcommittee of the board to, you know, plan out the steps of the superintendent search. And perhaps by our next, by our first January meeting, we can have some outlines, you know, whomever that is, have some outlines for us to consider in terms of that process.
I can bring you that process that you used from the last search. So, I mean, you did it yourselves and that was pretty much the way you just described it. So Annette has all of that information. I'll bring that all forward in a packet for you.
Great.
If, that's okay. I mean, if that's what you'd like me to do, okay.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, you know, it's always good to have a plan you start with. You may end up changing it, but it's good to have a place to start rather than reinvent the wheel.
Sue, were you involved with that process?
Yes, yes, I was. I think it worked quite well. Was, no one, you weren't involved? No?
No.
No, it didn't.
Didn't we come on the same time? No, yeah.
We did. You were elected in May.
Okay. It's kind of uncomfortable going straight from your resignation letter to planning beyond you, but I guess there's, so I apologize for that, but we have to.
I'm glad you're taking.
Keep moving.
Yeah, I agree.
Have to keep moving.
I agree.
Okay, any other resignations, I guess?
Nope.
Not all we can stand.
Absolutely. Nominations?
And sir?
Okay, we have a manifest, I know.
Yes, we do.
Manifest?
Yes.
Make a motion that we approve the manifest for December. The total of all manifests is $840,000, $840,192.13. It's going to the right this time, I think.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thanks. Calendar or other?
While it was included in the manifest total, I would like to have a discussion of this particular one. And since it is a personnel matter, it has to do with compensation of an individual, I'd like to just have that quick discussion and close session. It's one that didn't get passed down. You can look at it. I passed it back to Cliff because it just, I was just wondering what it, what it was.
Okay.
Okay, so then we'll discuss that in non-public tonight. The calendar. December is about done, as Forrest you just mentioned.
It's Friday, half-day.
No.
Full-day.
Full-day tomorrow.
Surprise quizzes, last period?
Absolutely.
Oh, are you kidding me? The kids are really looking forward to.
The high school has a nice program in the afternoon.
Teachers, like a teacher pageant, talent show kind of thing.
Last hour of the day.
I know my kids are looking forward to it.
Yeah, they're very excited.
Should be fun.
Mm-hmm.
What time does that go off?
Hmm, 1:00.
Will it be videotaped?
I suspect not. Knowing some of the players.
Saturday, the 5th of January, we have a Budget Committee Review of the School Board Budget, 8:00 a.m. Which follows our Thursday meeting, which will be our last chance to, to make adjustments with regard to that. The public hearing regarding the budget is January the 10th. And then the public hearing regarding the bond is on Monday, the 14th. Busy month. And then our regularly scheduled meeting then thereafter is on the 17th. Anything we need to add? Project graduation items or?
Project graduation will be holding its first bingo fundraiser on January, on Saturday, January 19th at, I believe it's at 11:00 a.m. at the high school cafeteria.
What day was that again?
January 19th, Saturday, January 19th, 11:00 a.m., high school cafeteria.
Okay, any other calendar items we have to add?
We will be adding them as we do the interviewing.
We certainly will. Certainly will. We think our calendars are ready for. Okay, then if there's no other business, I'd entertain a motion to go into non-public session?
Before we make a motion for non-public, would you, would you like to consider a group of us to work on superintendent search before the June 3rd meeting, January 3rd meeting, excuse me?
Let's wait till we get the paperwork back from Mrs. Murphy.
But who would that be forwarded to?
No, I'm talking about the permanent, I'm talking about so that we begin January talking about the, the long-term, the replacement search. Again, better sooner than later.
Right, we can put that all together and get it off to you, you know? Mail it right off to you as soon as we, you know, Annette can work on that.
Okay, let's do it. We can pick it up.
Yeah. And I'd, I'd just like to make an appeal to anyone in the community that would like to be involved in that process. I'm assuming that we've, in the past, have had community members. Welcome to take part in that. So, yeah, thanks for, for highlighting that.
Yeah, I think, but you're talking about, the paperwork that we're going to be getting is for the interim.
There'll be this paperwork hopefully quickly forthcoming regarding.
Yeah, for both.
Right. There's, there may be resumes and things coming in for the interim. I'm talking about developing the process for the permanent replacement of the superintendent. And I think, you know, we need to be prepared on January 3rd if we're not going to come in with sort of a, something sort of hammered out to spend some time on our agenda that night. You know, laying out, laying out the process or at least the outlines of it so that we could start moving on advertisements and we've got to write advertisements, we've got to. Didn't decide we're gonna, we've got to decide whether we're going to engage a consultant to assist in the search. I mean, School Boards Association can do that, you know, there's different things to consider.
Is that something we could do with an unposted meeting?
No, we can't.
We can't. So if we get the paperwork, we just have to look at it and wait till.
Right, but, well, no, you, if it's a subcommittee, we'd still post it. But, you know, you don't have to have everyone present.
So we could meet like on the 27th and 28th of December or something like that?
27th would be fine. 28th might not be as available as the 27th.
During the day?
During the day. Yeah. Or the 26th. I'm going to be in both the 26th and the 27th of next week.
And the office is not closed?
No, the office is open, you know, we, the office will be closed Monday and Tuesday. It'll be open Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, but lightly, very, very lightly staffed. And Monday, it'll be open the 31st. And then, but we'll back in on the 2nd, so. Not too many days, really. But the 26th and 27th, I could meet with you if you want and I could put together the materials. A subcommittee of you.
I'd be willing to meet.
Forrest, I think it would be great if you could be part of that.
Be happy to.
Okay. Which day is better?
Either one.
Well, 27th.
Yeah, 27th. I'll probably sleep most of the 26th.
Yeah, that would be true. And I, would give me time to set everything up in case I couldn't get it done.
What time? 9:00?
As far as it.
9?
Uh, that would be great. 9:00?
It's fine.
And it will be just Chet and Forrest, okay.
Okay.
Technically, it should only be two of us.
Yep, because the three would.
Or else it would be a posted meeting and, okay.
Make a motion, we move into non-public.
For the discussion of land and personnel.
Land and personnel, thank you.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.